All right, sounds good. It's Clarice here tonight, Sunday. Okay, this is it. All right, I'll go ahead and...
And one quick update as well on the agenda, just for y'all's sake. We had some utility reviews that were tabled last month. We were meeting with, I believe that was AT&amp;T. It was the week of the snowstorm. We didn't meet, so those are off the agenda. We're meeting, I think, following up tomorrow. And we'll be back next month, hopefully, with that, those cases.
I was wondering why we didn't have any 1152 elevens today. I was curious. All right, I'd like to go ahead and call our February 3, 2025, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. We have a full house today. The first item on the agenda, other than the welcome, is to reschedule our meeting. Do we need a motion for that? I believe we do, don't we? Do I have a motion to reschedule our March 3 meeting to March 6?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to reschedule the March 3 meeting to March 6 at 5:00 p.m.
Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our consent agenda. Anything that needs to be taken out or any questions or concerns with the minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Right, any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed, say nay. Motion also passes unanimously. Moving on to our regular agenda. I don't see any old business. Is that correct, Cindy? Thank you. Moving on to new business. SR 25.02 is the first item on the new business agenda.
Okay, this is for Harvey &amp; Thomas Orthodontics and the Encounter Development. The owner is Fairhope 9 LLC. This is a site plan review, so Planning Commission's making a recommendation to City Council. Harvey &amp; Thomas Orthodontics is going on Lot 9 of the Encounter Commercial Retail Center. We all know where that is, northeast corner of Alabama Highway 104 and 181. Benjamin Cummings is the authorized agent. It is one acre and is Zone B2. And the proposed building's 8,200 square feet. There you go. And there's the site plan. It's a long building. The setbacks vary for the encounter, but B2 requires only a 20-foot front setback. Lot 4 backs up to Alabama Highway 104, which has a 100-foot highway construction setback. The site data table on that previous one, it actually reads 125, so if they can just change that for future reference, that would be great. It's actually supposed to be just 100 for the 104 side. The building height's 30 feet. It takes up 19% of Lot 9. And the proposed use is a dental and orthodontics office. The materials for the building are brick veneer, hardy plank, with a shingled roof. So the site plan includes interior sidewalk around the perimeter of the building. There's also interior sidewalk extending to the existing sidewalk on Encounter Drive that came with the development. All the mechanical equipment's on there. It's screened. Looks good. Drainage has been accommodated for all of Encounter. We say that all the time. You guys keep on hearing it. So they're not individual retention, detention facilities on the lots, but there is a large retention pond within Lot 12, where most of that drainage is directed. They have a BMP. It looked good. A photometric plan was submitted with the application on Sheet ESP1. It does not have the heights of the light poles, but as a reminder, parking lots with 50 or fewer spaces shall have light poles that do not exceed 10 feet. So need to make sure they're only 10 feet tall. Traffic study was conducted for the entire Encounter Development, and the road infrastructure was done accordingly. There was a trip generation letter submitted with this application that estimates 244 daily trips for the medical dentist office building. There are the landscape plans. And about the landscaping plan, two points to make. The landscape area makes up about 38% of the site, but where this orange is, it just appears to be a gap in what's supposed to be a continuous blocked site plane. So I don't know if Joe's here tonight. Anyone? Okay. But he already put that one back in there because it was a gap. They just forgot to press the little button to make another shrub. However, there is another one. And Will Mastin and I looked at this, which is our Horticulture, our new Horticulture. And it looks on the landscape plan, and I think that you guys got this one later on today because it didn't do right with the scanning. Is that right? Okay, so they're supposed to be, and I'm kind of looking at you, Paul, for these overstorey trees, it looks like it might be in need of another one, just because this number eight's accredited tree, which I interpret that as not counting. But I'm up for, you know, suggestions. Joe seemed to think it was okay. Will didn't know, so I put it in there. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
You can never have too many trees, can you?
I agree, right. So we'll leave it in there for right now.
So accredited trees...
But planted trees.
Wait. Trees that were planted as part of the development?
No, they have, no, this is, they're planting them. There's supposed to be five.
The one that's getting credited.
Yes, that one's there. The number eight is getting credited. That was already there.
A natural tree or one that was the street trees for the development? A new planted tree?
Everything on the Encounter site, when the subdivision was done, was planted.
Yeah, planted.
There was no, other than what was over by the Encounter house.
Right, the house has nice trees, but otherwise it was just field.
So then, so then, only a native growing tree that is, you know, saved would be credited towards...
That's right. There shouldn't be any credits for those. And this is meeting the requirements inside the lot, so let's make the condition that the trees there, if they can prove that they don't, it's not required. I mean, let's preserve that that's there.
Right. We'll just put it on the record and then we can come back.
That would not count. They would need to add another tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how I interpreted it, but...
There's no credit for a street tree that was planted as part of the overall subdivision.
Right. Yes, okay.
They can't claim that tree for credit.
Thank you. Okay, that was my stance. Okay, thank you. So we're gonna leave it in there as a condition. Okay. The parking has surplus parking with 49 spaces. 41 are actually required. They have the 20% overage, and that overage is pervious. Eight of the 41 parking spots shall be pervious, and they are. And then compact car parking requirements are also met. And the parking itself meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance. There is a dumpster enclosure in the northeast quadrant of the site. A six-foot masonry wall is around the enclosure, and there will be shrubs planted where it is not part of the vehicular use area. And that's what it looks like, the visual. Utility plan was submitted with application. However, the next available utility meeting is February 6. So Fairhope can provide, they had gone before, but they had to go back. Fairhope can provide water, sewer, and gas to the Encounter Development, and Riviera may provide electricity. They just need to get down to the nuts and bolts of what actually they need. AT&amp;T can provide communications. And a meeting with Fairhope Public Utilities shall confirm and specify what's actually needed to accommodate the medical dental office. They're scheduled for that February 6 meeting, so that needs to take place, and they need to know what they need to know from that meeting before this goes on to City Council. So Planning, we do recommend a Planning Commission to recommend a City Council conditional approval with the following conditions. Correct the site data table for that 100-foot highway setback from Alabama 104. Update the photometric plan with 10-foot highlighting. Add, this is picky, but add Slide Number 2963A to the legal description, because it just had a blank, but that's actually the correct slide. The applicant shall attend a utility meeting on February 6, and that needs to take place, obviously, prior to the site plan going to City Council. And the landscape plan needs to be updated to reflect shrubs being 40 inches tall at time of planning, because they had 36 on there. An additional shrub along Encounter Drive, right of the entrance, looking to the north, was that orange spot. He's already fixed that. I haven't seen it, but Joe said he fixed it. And then additional overstorey tree along that Encounter Drive, right of the entrance, since that number eight credited tree is not an accredited tree after all.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for staff at this time? In that case, is somebody who would like to make a presentation on behalf of the applicant? Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I'm Ben Cummings. I'm the architect for the owners. We don't have any issues with any of the staff comments. We can certainly, you know, add the shrub, add the tree. You know, we will have to redo the site lighting. I did talk to the engineer. The current poles are taller than 10 feet, so it may be that there'll be more light poles to provide the site lighting that's needed for a 10-foot-high pole. But, you know, we didn't have a problem with anything, except we are not on the February 6 agenda for the utility meeting. Our mechanical and plumbing drawings are not complete yet because the owners have not made up their mind on the type of dental equipment they have. So as soon as I can get the owners to make a decision on the dental equipment, then the plumbing drawings will be complete, and then we could do the utility meeting. And if that has to delay the recommendation to the City Council, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. And I also want to thank everybody for coming out to support our project.
Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Any questions for applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
If you'll just hang out up front, I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time. No public hearing? All right, we'll go ahead and we'll move on then. All right, any questions about this, just for the audience? This is a site plan review, so in this case, we simply make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council will ultimately make the decision on this. Any questions for anybody? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we recommend approval to the City Commission regarding SR 25.03, Harvey &amp; Thomas Orthodontics, subject to staff recommendations.
O2.
O2. 25.02, yes. And I've got a motion to recommend approval to the City Council for SR 25.02. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, SR 25.03, another site plan review.
Hey, it's me again. Okay, this is for Lot 4, Encounter Development, for Fusackleys and Just Chillin'. Okay, so Lieb Engineering Company is the applicant for a site plan approval for the new Fusackleys and Just Chillin' locations on Lot 4. Chris Lieb and/or Ivan Blackman are authorized agents. The site is 101.53 acres and is Zone B2. The proposed buildings are 5,874 square feet for Fusackleys and 1,178 square feet for Just Chillin'. There you go, more Encounter. There's the Lot 4 highlighted in the blue. There's the site plan. And this is tiny, but this one up here, the proposed building, this is the Just Chillin', which is an ice cream stand. Fusackleys is down here. They face each other in this square up here. Okay. B2 only requires a 20-foot front setback. Lot 4 fronts Bushel Drive, which has a 25-foot setback. Lot 4 is adjacent to Alabama Highway 181 with a 125-foot highway construction setback. And the other setbacks are zero rear and zero to the side per the recorded plat for Encounter Development. Like I said, there are two proposed front buildings on the site. They face each other. Just Chillin' is 17 feet high, and Fusackleys is 19.6 feet high. Those two buildings combined take up almost 11% of Lot 4. And I think everybody's familiar with Fusackleys. And then also, Just Chillin' is an ice cream stand. And this is the front elevation of the Just Chillin' building. And that's Fusackleys. So this site plan does include interior sidewalks from both buildings that go out to Bushel Drive to, oops, sorry, to go out to Bushel Drive to these sidewalks. And there's interior sidewalks, too, that you can see as well. And this is, there's a pedestrian circulation plan, is what this is, which is in the packet. So the ADA requirements have been met. Mechanical equipment is finalized and shielded on the site plan. A site plan was not submitted with this application, so signage has to, for both businesses, has to conform to the sign ordinance when they get to that. The same story for stormwater. No individualized retention or detention ponds. It mostly all just goes towards that Lot 12. BMP plan was good. Utility plan was submitted and has been reviewed and approved by the appropriate providers. There was a traffic study for Encounter, like I said earlier, and then a trip generation letter has been provided. And the PM peak trips per day for Fusackleys is 87, and Just Chillin' is 39, so it's a total of 126. The plan has surplus parking with 48 spaces. 40 spaces are required. 20% overage is allowed and shall be pervious, which it is. 13 of the 48 spots are pervious. And it meets the perimeter landscape and the other parts of the zoning ordinance. A photometric plan was submitted with the complete plans. It's hard to read it, but it looks, it reads 18 feet tall as opposed to 10, so the same story. It's less than 50 parking, so with less than 50, it has to be less, 10 feet or less of the light poles. There's a double dumpster enclosure. It's located on the Fusackleys portion of the site. 1,000-gallon grease trap is also located on the Fusackleys site. And there are shubs around the enclosure that are not part of the vehicular use area, as well as a vinyl fence. And the grease trap is sotted around it. So the landscape plan was reviewed by the City Horticulturist and approved. The parking had to be adjusted from the original submitted plan that lessened the number of parking spaces. It was 51. Now it's 48. The math is the same for the required trees within the vehicular use area and the landscaping. However, the plant schedule that came with the landscaping plan still reads 51 parking spots. It should just be to 48. Again, kind of a nitpicky thing, but for future reference, not to cause confusion. And here's the landscaping plan. And that's, in this little area is where it reads the 51 as opposed to 48. It's highlighted in the staff report. So again, this is a recommendation to City Council, but the staff recommends to Planning Commission to recommend to City Council conditional approval for SR 25.03 with the following conditions. To update the photometric plan with 10-foot lighting and update the landscaping plan, Page 2, to reflect a total of 48 parking spaces, not 51. And Chris is here. Chris Lieb's here.
Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I just had an additional comment on the landscape plan. As you're coming in to the right...
Mm-hmm. Okay, Bushel. Yeah.
Off of Bushel to the right.
Mm-hmm.
The required vehicular screening is supposed to start at four feet from the curb.
So neither would be...
And that first, the beginning of that required vehicular screening is, that's way more than...
Four feet.
Four feet from the curb.
Okay. This one.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
Right.
Okay. We can add that, read it into it.
Quick comment. One, you just need a stamp that says 48-inch parking lot screening required and don't exceed 10 feet. And just my wish list pitch in everybody's spare time. I think that that 10-foot really helps with preventing light pollution and glare, but if we could also start to, I'm volunteering myself, align with, you know, the model dark sky ordinances, we could take that even further. One, you know, celebrate the little things. I appreciate when somebody does more than the minimum amount of pervious parking spaces, so it looks actually intentional, instead of, I was forced to cram these two in my asphalt parking lot. So I appreciate that they did that.
And for you guys that are in the audience, this is all the pervious, this is parking right here.
It looks better for their parking.
Yeah, it's symmetrical, so...
I hope we see more of that.
Any more questions for staff at this time? All right, in that case, does anybody wish to speak to this item from the developer?
Good evening. I'm Chris Lieb with Lieb Engineering Company. I did the plans for the project, and we have no, we're not opposed to updating the light plan. I mean, we had 51 spots. That's why they were taller, and last minute we changed. And so, you know, and we'll add the extra landscaping at the entrance, as you have stated. So we don't have any issues with any of the conditions.
Any questions for Chris at this time? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, again, this is a site plan review, so our motion will be to recommend to City Council. It will not be a final motion here. City Council will make this decision as it is part of the zoning regulations. Any further questions or concerns for staff or developer? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend to City Council conditional approval of SR 25.03 with staff conditions.
I've got a motion to recommend approval. Do you want to add the additional on the landscaping?
How do I, with... Four feet.
If it pleases the commission, that's part of our city ordinance right now, so just calling it to our attention will make sure it's done.
It'll be fine then. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council for SR 25.03. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to SD subdivision 25.02.
Mike Jeffrey, City of Fairhope. So this is a public hearing to consider the request of the applicant Jade Consulting on behalf of Michael Jason Tickle 2020 Trust for a preliminary plat approval of Windrow subdivision. It's a 21-lot subdivision, approximately 18 acres, and is located on the east side of Section Street between Twin Beach Road and Broadbeck Lane. The property is currently zoned by Fairhope as R1, low-density, single-family residential district. On the screen, you can see on the right is the aerial. It's a wooded site, and you'll see, you know, a little bit when we get to it, there are some wetlands on-site with some wetland mitigation, creation, and enhancement that we'll go into further detail. On the left is the zoning map. This property is directly across from the Hilltop subdivision. On the screen is the plat for reference. Primarily, the wetlands are on the northern side and the western side of the property. There'll be one wetland crossing for the road to get into the site. The utilities for any work in Baldwin County right-of-way will require permitting from the Baldwin County Highway Department. Riviera is the electric provider. Fairhope Utilities is the sewer provider, gas provider, and water provider. There may be aid to construction cost for any of those utilities. And the lift station will be located on a separate lot to be dedicated to the City of Fairhope. AT&amp;T is the communications provider. A trip generation was not triggered resulting from the number of peak hours tripped, but there was a traffic letter submitted. The drainage is a little complex for this site. The storm runoff is collected in five onsite drainage areas and then is directed into two dry detention-retention swells and one wet detention pond. The stormwater system does use multiple LID techniques, as I mentioned, bio-retention swells, bio-retention ponds, and wet ponds to control the runoff. And as much of the water is being able to be infiltrated into the ground as the natural surroundings will allow. The stormwater report indicated that there will be no adverse effects to adjacent properties. Due to the uniqueness of the drainage, it kind of goes into a common area under the right-of-way, back into common area. The drainage area and the whole infrastructure will remain the responsibility of the HOA and the POA to maintain. When we get to the final plat, we will have a cooperative maintenance agreement. It will be finalized prior to that final plat approval. Here was a drainage plan, in case we needed to see it for reference. And you can see it, some of the piping goes from the common areas through the right-of-way into these ponds. The landscaping does have the required street trees between the sidewalk and right-of-way. The area around the lift station's been screened and landscape provided, and the green space requirements are exceeded. There's a preserve on the north and west side that accounts for 4.08 acres of the required 1.78 acres. Additional green space, approximately a third of an acre is from the wet pond, and that's 30% of the surface area for that. Green space plan is shown on the screen. I'll call to your attention that the light green area, that is not being calculated as part of the green space. That is outside of the preserved wetland area, so it's demonstrated in green as an open space, but is not considered in the green space calculations. The area in dark green is that usable area that is a preserve. And then the blue area in the middle is where the wet pond will be, and 30% of that surface area was accounted for in the green space calculations.
So the usable green space is wetland?
The usable green space would be the wetland area would be the natural preserve, as indicated in the chart that we have in the subdivision regulations.
And there is, so kind of a unique aspect of this property, and you can see some of the tree protections. All the drainage and in the wetlands was fine. And you wind up and see tree preservation mixed with drainage, mixed with wetlands mitigation. There's actually an improvement in restoration of what right now is, how would you best describe it, Eric? It's a drainage swell? Well, there actually is a plan in here to restore the plant life and all within that area. So that was done at a four-to-one ratio...
I believe it was four-to-one ratio per our ordinance.
Yes. So there's more area created than is deserved.
Yeah, I'll hold comments until I have questions. I saw all of that. It was more about the usability, accessibility, usability kind of question.
So we have two waiver requests with this subdivision. Requesting a waiver from the requirement of the 50-foot right-of-way width according to Appendix A in Table 5.3 of the subdivision regulations. The applicant's proposing a 40-foot right-of-way for Windrow Circle. Portions of that sidewalk will be inside of an easement to allow lots to allow for drainage in the bio-retention area. The applicant is requesting a waiver from installing sidewalks The applicant is requesting a waiver from installing sidewalks on the entirety of both sides of the road, mainly on the entrance, top hallway to Lot 20 on the north side, and eliminate, or in eliminating the sidewalk along the north side will minimize the impacts to that adjacent wetland, and the request is also to not install a sidewalk along Section Street south of the entrance due to very minimal shoulder and the property sloping towards existing wetlands. Staff in coordination with other departments does support the waiver request, but recognizes that the, the planning commission is the ultimate authority for approving or denying the waiver. There is connectivity provided between the lots.
Does there not need to be connectivity to the south?
Let me get back. So there could be a future, we have a connectivity through the east, but there, that is a very good valid point. I don't have a, I don't have a clear reason why they're, why we don't have a connection to the south.
To, if you recall, there was an informal review of this, and there was the adjacent property, which is not what we're reviewing tonight, I think was in essence a phase two, and that provided the connectivity to the north and south, but we're not guaranteed that phase, but I think that was the, what we discussed in the long-term plan. I believe that would connect to Old Battles Village was, if I'm remembering right.
Yes.
Would have been the connectivity to the...
The current landowner presented a plan as an informal review that included the properties to the east that could potentially connect to Twin Beach Road and to Old Battles Village to the south. But the, the current phase, as we see it now, is a single-phase development, so there is no guarantee that those other phases that we saw will come to fruition.
All right.
So we hit on the wetland enhancement and creation that was done. The applicant is proposing to enhance some of those existing wetlands. They were, weren't of the highest quality of wetlands, so we do have some enhancements. Gina Toddia with Wetland Resources provided a third-party review, provided comments, and we had, do have the plan and information that was revised due to those comments. A separate permit will have to be submitted to the building department per the wetland ordinance for this work to happen, which includes more detail than what we have on the screen, but we went over those requirements during this review, and applicants feel comfortable of that meeting. We have looked at the, the ratios, as Mr. Cortina has mentioned, for what that requires, and there is the room, and they have shown that proposed work on this wetland creation plan. On that plan, the area in green is the proposed wetland creation, and the dark green is the enhancement area. The area shaded, slanted in red hashed, is the area of wetland impact. That's part of where the wetland crossing is for the road and the detention area. Some general comments, there will be a pre-construction meeting required prior to the issuance of any building permits, and the terminus of the road that extends to the east shall be approved by the utility departments and public works department at time of permitting. There were some conversations on how far to extend the asphalt to the actual property line, to extend, how best to extend the water lines, sewer lines, all the utilities to the property line, and the exact details, I don't know where they landed. I know there was concerns from the developer's side on being able to bring the asphalt to the edge of the property without disturbing the neighboring adjacent property, but right now it shows it's stopping short just a couple feet of that property line. It will be future, it will be right of way if this gets through and gets, goes through final plat, so there's not a concern of it being on private property when that connection occurs. It's just, what is the purview of the utility department, public works department on where they want that connection to actually stop? So staff recommendations on the waiver recommendation was have to be voted on separately. Staff recommends approval of two waiver requests to allow a 40-foot right of way for Windrow Circle. Number two, not to install sidewalks along the north side of Tallpaw Way from the entrance to Lot Number 20, and not install sidewalks along the Section Street south of the entrance. And then staff recommends approval of SD 25.02, the Windrow preliminary plat with the following conditions, approval of the two waiver request, and a note shall be added to the plat that the drainage inside the subdivision shall remain private and subject to the cooperative maintenance agreement associated with the subdivision. The drainage is not the responsibility of the City of Fairhoop to maintain. And if there are any questions on behalf of staff, I'd be happy to answer them, and then we have Trey Genright with Jade Consulting and Jason Tickle, the owner of the development, to answer questions as well.
What about the precedent for setting that 40-foot right of way?
I think we're okay here. In essence, there's two 40-foot right of ways, so there's 80 feet of right of way provided. You know, it's a U shape to do the bio retention in the middle of the area.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
I mean, we're, if somebody wants to put 80 feet instead of, I think this is, this is kind of why the waiver question's out there, and there's no...
If, I can tell you, if, if it was a waiver request for a linear 600-foot of road to have a 40-foot right of way because we needed 10 more feet of lots on one side, there wouldn't be support for that. So due to the uniqueness of the drainage and the area that's surrounding it, is part of, then they defined limited area that the request is actually for, gives, leads to the support.
The request, but the reason for those minimum widths is so we have enough room for our utilities, our street, our drainage, our sidewalks, and our street trees, and all those things are being accommodated for.
I had, I had just that question about access, which I'll preface with, I do really appreciate the wetland enhancement and restoration. It's, it's a tricky thing to do stormwater in a wetland, but the ratio creating, you know, four to one for the creation versus impacted area and seven something to one for enhancement to, I mean, that's all, I, I think the green space is very positive. I mean, the landscape palette, it looked like it's like 95% native plants. So I mean, there were a lot of positive things, I'm not slamming the landscape, but I was, I actually thought the colors were reversed about what's usable green space and what's not usable green space when I first saw it, because I wasn't sure how you, how, can you hike through the wetlands? Is there a trail?
Let's, let's ask the developer that, because he's coming up next.
That's a good question.
I have the exact same questions as you do. This thing is kind of isolated with no, you know, they're requesting no sidewalks on, on County Road 3, and then it's isolated, so I'd, I'd kind of like to know where the kids are going to throw the baseball or kick the soccer ball.
Well, I guess the question for staff that I should have researched before I got here was, for the reserve type, do we, do we define access, usability?
Preserve, and I think what that means, I'm sorry.
And you can certainly, I think it'd be great to ask the engineer, make sure what I'm saying is correct. I think the intent there was usable to be able to credit for the green space requirements, and the preserve is, is what is there, doesn't have a minimum acreage, you know, it's just to set aside land that is not to be disturbed and therefore the, the environmental benefits.
Any more questions?
I'd just like to make sure, 15 years from now, when everything changes down there, the city's not going to be responsible for putting sidewalks in there because everybody in there wants a sidewalk. They need to leave theirs. I want to make sure it's big, bold letter, the city's not responsible for any sidewalks in this particular subdivision where they were left out.
We can certainly have the developer add a note that the city will not be required to add any sidewalks in the future.
Let's get the developer to speak, and then, because I've got some issues on the waivers too that I'd like to discuss after the developer makes his presentation. Trey, are you or Stephen gonna, you and Jason gonna do the presentation?
Good evening, Trey Genright, Jade Consulting. Thank y'all. So I think there's a couple of things I wanted to touch base on. It seems like maybe some clarification on how the, the open space, the green space was calculated. So the city has a Table 4.1 in the regulations that give you a whole list of options that you can use to create green space. The density of the, the requirement of the green space is based on density, and so this project being in a low density, it's just over one acre of density in there, the threshold is only 10% to meet, to meet the usable green space. To get the usable, usable green space, you can go through a litany of, of different uses you can use. You can do a courtyard, I can do a playground, I can do a preserve. Well, the preserve is a minimum of three acres, and so this site here has four acres of, of green space in there that are, that we could classify as a preserve, and so that is exceeding that table requirement right there. By exceeding that table requirement, we almost double the requirement of open space the project even has to have to begin with, so it only needs 10%, and we've got over 20 something percent of green space in there, so.
Yeah, but Trey, let me say this, though, we kind of made a mistake when we were re, kind of find a number of these things, when you go through and, and make changes where the, the percentage of the green space is no issue at all, you know, one concern that we had, and it, and somehow or another, the usable green space for people did not get brought over saying that, yes, we have to have these percentages, but it also has to be usable, and there's another area in the, in the subdivision regs that actually says the green space has to be usable. If you read in other areas, it didn't connect to that one area, because, you know, our intent wasn't to ever have somebody bring in a 50-acre parcel with 20 acres of swamp-type wetlands and say, hey, there's the green space when you can't develop it anyway, and the kids have nowhere to play, so I'm just simply asking the question of, you know, for these 20 lots and then, you know, we're in plan, you know, phase two, you know, where are the children going to play is, is what I'm asking, where's that, that...
I would say they don't even, they don't all have to play ball on a field. They can, they can play in the woods.
Can they play in the woods? Is this where they can get around? I'm just, I'm not critical at all now. I'm just asking you to educate me on where can the kids go around.
So this, this piece of property in itself is unique, as in, I think the staff tried to tap, tiptoe around it. The, the swell that runs through there is either jurisdictional or not. We're taking the stance tonight that it's jurisdictional. We've submitted those permits to the Corps of Engineers, and it falls under a nationwide situation right there. The mitigation that you presented complies with the city's mitigation codes, assuming that it is permitted, so we're not arguing with that. We're presenting it as an ease. The jurisdiction may come back from the Corps and say it's not required. We'll deal with that at that point. We presented enough information to satisfy that. What I'm telling you with all this is that we're trying to preserve as much of this property as we possibly can, and the areas that we're not preserving, we're enhancing them. So if you walk through there, there's car parks, there's a bunch of trash in there. It's not an amenity. It's not a feature. It's nothing, anything that anybody would be proud of, so we're going to clean all that up. We want to put a wet, a, a, a wet pond there in this front section, because it would be an amenity. You actually would be able to use it. It'll be a feature, it'll be, it'll have fish in there, so it'll be a recreational item. I'm not going out and calling that in there because I'm not trying to get into semantics of can you walk in and use it or not, that the table technically doesn't say that, but in generality, yes, you can. The sidewalk trails in there, they loop around the cul-de-sac, so the, the question was the 40-foot waiver in there. We actually got 100-foot, imagine 100-foot Boulevard going into a development. That's what you've got there, but we're creating a wide open space in order to put the stormwater in an inverted pond in there, in the inverted meeting, so it leaves us 40 feet on either side, so it's a total foot of 80-foot of right of way in there, so it exceeds the way that Mike was describing it, but the sidewalks wrap all the way around the outside of it, and they go around and connect to this green space that you actually could walk down in there. The same way with the sidewalks, the only place that we're actually asking a sidewalk waiver is, is not in front of any lots, it's on the section of, Section Street, south of the driveway. There's a law, there's a little valley, a little hole area in there. When the same developer built Hilltop, we put the sidewalk along Section Street, built a nice little bridge across the creek right there, and then it went to the south, so the natural progression of pedestrian traffic would be across Section Street to the existing sidewalk, across the Trallis Bridge, and then continuing south. That's, that is why we're asking for the waiver in this one location right here. We're actually showing a sidewalk going to the north, and that would connect to the new, the restaurant that's there now, so the only section of sidewalk we're asking for the waiver is the, the section from the driveway south on the section of the road. We're proposing sidewalks everywhere else in there, and so I, I, you know, I don't know that we're asking for any, any leniency. We're trying to make something that's nicer than, you know, as nicer, nicer than Hilltop, and I think Hilltop's been an asset to the community.
So the kids won't be able to use the, get into that wetland and walk around? I mean, it's, it's movable walk around, it's, it's something they'll be able to move around in and...
It's going to be planted up like no difference other wood section in there. Right now, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's dirty, so we're going to clean that up and replant it in there. It's going to be a natural wooded area in there. The pro, and then there's the right of way question was like, you know, so there is plans for the project to go forward to the east, and so then the green space for that one will be a totally different concept, so that's got open parks in the middle of the feature out there, so that would be part of what we potentially could be phase two. That's not before you tonight, but then it is on the books, and the way the street stubs there is, is in align with, with our plans, so that green space and that feature will, is master planned out into something different, so, a different use. So I think it would align with you, with more of what you were talking for is a community playground, so.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with the sidewalk waiver inside the subdivision at all, and I don't have a problem with the right of way at all, and our attorney doesn't, so I certainly don't. I do have a, a bit of a concern about the sidewalk on Section Street not going to the south as this area grows, and, you know, y'all connecting it to the north to the restaurant. What about future subdivisions coming in? And so you don't have my support on that. I have no issues with the rest of it.
I mean, that, it could, it could go that way. It would be in a form of a boardwalk, and I'm not saying it can't be done, but what we're saying is we did a, the same development team did a really nice feature on the, on the west side of Section Street with the, with the bridge, and so I don't know that this project's going to replicate that same feature, and so why take away from that when you've already got something there? That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, and I, and I understand the ask, I just don't support it.
And Chairman, I, you know, just to add on here, that section, section of, section of Section Street is a county right of way, so we haven't been all involved in all of those conversations of what that drainage looks like, you know, but bare minimum, there should at least be crosswalks to connect to those across the street. Has that been a conversation with the, kind of some more commercial Dragonfly, the Lot 29? Has, has the county been reviewing that? Something we're not aware of? I'm just kind of curious that we, sorry, and sorry, I was out of the office some this month, so didn't get a chance to ask that follow-up.
What do you mean? Your back still on you?
All right, any other questions for the developer at this time? All right.
I don't have any questions. I just have, I mean, what, I think we need to also remember that green space is workable, a lot of different green spaces. I mean, it could be a, a wildlife habitat. I mean, there's a lot of things we can work with, it doesn't have to be, you know, a softball field. I mean, we can definitely...
That was my entire intent. I didn't want to go clear something that, I'm, I'm trying to replant it and try to revegetate it, and I just don't, and when I, when, I know you guys don't have in front of you, but the next phase I can tell you is what it's planned for, so.
And this, in a statement about the sidewalk, you know, I know that we at least need one sidewalk on Section Street on one side of the road. I don't think we need redundant sidewalks on both sides of the road, so, you know, having a crosswalk, I think would be highly effective to make sure that we are directing the traffic across the way, just like it is on Twin Beach Road. I think that we're definitely going to need a pedestrian movement with all the growth that's from Battles Road.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to any of that.
Well, my, my concern is, is, you know, what is this going to look like in five years from now, in 10 years from now? I mean, that area is as hot as a $3 pistol right now, and do we...
We need it now. We need the sidewalk now.
But I'm saying, do we want people to, in five, seven years from now, do we want people who are further south on, on Section Street to have to cross over onto the western sidewalk?
I do. I think it'll slow the traffic down.
And then, and then after they cross over, then they've got to go, and then they've got to cross over again, you know, to get to the restaurant if they want to go to the restaurant or to...
I think it's a traffic calming device that I think would be effective, because I think it's going to slow the traffic down if you do have a crosswalk. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman.
No, you've got an opinion, yes, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, part of, part of the issue when you look at it, that section, that portion of the property on Section's 450 feet long. To put a sidewalk there, you're going to have to fill across a wetland for almost 250 feet. So the only thing that would be even moderately practical would be to do some sort of boardwalk, but regardless of what you do, you're going to be impacting a wetland that a lot, and we've had multiple meetings, we had Gina Toddia come in as the city's third-party, third-party consultant, and we reviewed this a lot, and so that was part of it, was trying to do everything we could in the review process to minimize anything going in or messing with those wetlands at all. That's something that's, you know, the city is very serious about, and so, you know, that was my thought when we reviewed, was what Holly said, was going up to the north, crossing over to where we already have a boardwalk and a sidewalk on the west side of the road. So that was my thought process in looking at, when we were looking at it, trying to avoid getting into those wetlands to the best of our ability.
No, I'm, I'm all supportive of wetlands, don't, don't get me wrong.
Sure.
You know, my family's owned a lot of land to, to sought for wetland preservation in those swamps, just to the west of there, but public safety is, you know, number one, and I don't like the idea of kids crossing streets, being in traffic, you know, slowing down devices sometimes, you know, but, you know, I mean, I just don't, you know, what's the population going to be? We have 20 here, how many we going to have to the east, and then what's going to come south of here? Are we going to have 400, 800, 1200? There's an apartment, you know, further south down there. It'd be nice to be connected that at some point we're supposed to have sidewalks, but I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. If you'll stay up front, Trey.
I have one more comment for Trey.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, I, just to be clear, I appreciate what y'all are doing with the landscape. I do, I think, you know, not to be redundant, my kids grew up playing in the gully. I mean, I think our kids need more wild landscapes to play in. We have lots of fields and paved sidewalks. The only thing I was getting at was, you know, our kids took a machete and made trails through the gully to go hike, and I, you know, how do you, I mean, it was on our property, just to be clear. Not in the city's gully, and they probably will do that, you know, but even just dirt footpath trails, I don't think paved trails are appropriate in a, in a, but I think, thinking of accessibility in terms of, well, and I spent this weekend in Shreveport in a very similar wetland floodplain, and three schools were using it as an outdoor classroom.
Well, that's another...
So I think just, yeah, footpath accessibility would, would really be an enhancement.
We, some of you may know, some of you don't know, but the Hilltop project is one that I've been proud of, the city, I know the city's proud of it. It's been on the state, the state's used it as a tour for the past three or four years. They bring crews through there and stop and look at that thing and go through there, and so they, they, in my opinion, we need to show them something else, so I was trying to flex on one across the street that was really showing how you can combine and do a lot of different things in there, and not to be disrespectful to a, a trail that we could walk in there, and that's certainly, I'm not saying it's not a possible yet, that's, that really wasn't where we were trying to go, and so we were really trying to flex environmental and just trying to keep it as sensitive as we possibly could, and recreate something that has been destroyed by years of abuse, and that was really where I was going, so, I mean, if the trail is something we need to do, I'm, I'm not against it. That's really what we were not trying to do for, for various reasons, so, thank you.
Thank you, Trey. This is a public hearing, and this is a subdivision, so we will actually have the final vote on that tonight. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item or have any questions or concerns? Yes, sir, and just the protocol, if you'll state your name and your address for our secretary.
Yes, Troy Vickers, 248 Cuban Lily. We live in the Colony, which is right near where we're talking about. And Mr. Turner, you're exactly right on the safety issue, where their walkway needs, sidewalk needs to be along that east side of Section. Section's a 45 mile an hour road. You want to put a cross-section across a 45 mile an hour road, and most people go down it about 60 to 70 between Twin Beach and Battles? We fight that every day, trying to come out of the Colony on Section. We see what's happening there. I don't, 200 feet of wetlands compared to... I don't, 200 feet of wetlands compared to a kid walking across the street, the wetlands lose every time. There is a way. I'm a P.E., licensed in the state of Alabama. There is a way to put a cross, a sidewalk along that pathway, along there, to prevent a crosswalk on Section. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak to this item?
Hello? My name is Donald DeGuts. My home is 110 Blakeney Avenue here in Fairhope. Just a question about the other waiver request about the right-of-way, just to be clear for me and, of course, Mike does an excellent job with these major subdivision applications and requests, and I appreciate that very much. There's a statement here, says portions of the sidewalk, again, this is about the right-of-way, will be located inside an easement on the lots to allow for drainage bioretention areas. So, when I see encroachment, if you will, on an easement, I get a little, you know, interested. So, these lots upon which an easement exists are owned or would be owned by the property owner. Then, are we saying that a sidewalk will be somehow joggled into their lot where other locations would not be?
The sidewalk will be in easement.
Yes.
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 Okay. Okay, so then other lots perhaps adjacent to that area would not necessarily have a sidewalk in the easement?
Correct. If you look at the plat, it shows the sidewalk easement as it meanders.
Meanders.
Meanders through.
Okay. Would that be an issue for a homeowner to...
It's very, it's very common.
Yeah, okay. But would that be an issue to a homeowner, a future homeowner, and to their property values? If an easement granted is actually used and not equally so in other properties?
The future property values aren't one of the items that we take into account.
Okay.
Has to meet the subdivision regs, which having sidewalks and easements clearly does.
Yeah.
We do that very often. Sometimes we'll set aside easements for future reference, 'cause they can be hard to pick up further down the road.
Yeah, yeah. Now, that's just my issue generally is about an easement. There was an item a long time ago for a subdivision of two homes in, across the street from me. And there was an easement granted for a sidewalk that we were told would never, ever, ever occur. But the easement was still required. So, I was just thinking, this is a different case. But anytime there's an easement demanded, or in this case, actually going to be used, I just wanted to speak to that.
The sidewalk will be installed. That's why we're putting the easement on the plat to cover where the installation of the sidewalk will go, so it does not interfere with the drainage that runs through.
Right.
In this case, the sidewalk will be installed prior to the final plat. And anybody that told you a sidewalk will never, ever, 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 never, ever, ever be built...
I thought it was you, but okay.
No, I never said that. I haven't said that in my life.
This is up in the bluff.
Get that on film of me saying that. I would love to put a sidewalk through the bluff right now personally.
Is that right?
I would love to have one go right through the, you know, the, you know, ride across Bayview and twirl around Summit, but most of the people in there wouldn't care for that. But as far as saying never, ever, you know, who knows what will happen in the future?
That was my impression, and I'm sorry to hear that you have that sentiment, but...
But we have requirements...
Yes.
For sidewalks, and so certainly, and when the requirement says you either have to build a sidewalk or have an easement, there's not a choice.
Right.
There's not a C, just A and B.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir. And state your name and your address, please, for our secretary.
I think it's something on a lot of people's minds. My name is Steve Cows. I live at 6878 Petio Drive in Hilltop, which is across the way there. I guess what I would ask is consideration for lowering the speed on that section of Section Street. I mean, I understand, I understand, we have a beautiful sidewalk and mitigation with the bridge over the, and the boardwalk over that wetlands area on one side. And, I mean, I think the big issue is less of whether there's a crosswalk, but that the speed limit is not 30 miles an hour as it is on the other side of Twin Beach.
That would be a city council item. I'm not a city council, a county item.
That's actually a county road.
That's a county road, so that'd be a county commission item.
Yeah.
Y'all can't do anything about it? No, okay.
I wish. I can support you. I agree.
One more thing. I have worked with planning with the city road, I mean, the county roads, and it was denied.
All right. If nobody else wishes to speak to this item, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, any questions or concerns?
So, you know, I'm sorry. So, I kinda agree with the, our chairman that I think that a boardwalk is a pretty low impact, and they did a great job on the one across the street. And I'd like to see it on both sides of the street for future development and for people not to have to cross the road. And certainly grading and filling wetlands and all of that to put in a concrete sidewalk. But a boardwalk is pretty low impact, and the initial impact, all of the vegetation usually comes back pretty aggressively, pretty quickly.
I agree Fox Hollow has a boardwalk that's a couple hundred feet long, and...
My question is, are we never gonna put a sidewalk on the east side anymore? Otherwise, you're gonna cross the street to the west, walk down a portion, walk across the street again to walk down a portion. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think...
Over the years.
Well, I think my thing, you know, ultimately, my thought is if you look at Highway 104 near 181, you know, look at it now, look at it eight years ago. Eight years ago, I had somebody tell me, are y'all kidding? You want us to put sidewalks on 104 right here? And today, we're, we added, what, a fusackies and a ice cream parlor? And a medical building, all three? And how many thousand apartments, units over the last three meetings? And Audi and Publix and everything else? And I just, you know, I just don't like the idea. I mean, I think ultimately, I would love to see a sidewalk from County Road 32 all the, you know, all the way to Fairhope on both sides of the road, the way the population is going out there. I mean, that's where it's growing right now in Fairhope. When you look at the apartments at Battles, you know, all the way through, that's, you know, eventually all gonna be, you know, those fields, I think, eventually be re-subdivided. So, you know, we've got, I think I hear, don't we have on a... Where's that property that, that's, don't we have a big subdivision coming up soon that's gonna be on County Road Three? 200 acres on, well, I guess that's on the other side, just right on the other side of Battles Road.
That's in the county?
I'm sorry, if we get an application, it would start with...
Right, but how many acres is that?
Oh, 300-ish.
And regardless, it's still 300 acres, and it's still people, and it's gonna be a highly dense population, and just that much more traffic going up and down County Road Three. That's my thought. I mean, I'll, but whoever makes the motion can motion either way. I think it's a fantastic presentation. I love the presentation. I just, and I support the waivers. I see no issue with them. But just personally, I'd like to see a sidewalk in that area, just a boardwalk sidewalk.
The only thing that, that's a county right-of-way, and that would have to go through, I'm assuming, any kind of sidewalk in the county right-of-way would have to go to county planning and zoning and their environmental review. So, are we having a sidewalk easement inside their property line? Because for us to be able to mandate anything be done, it would have to be on, I'm assuming, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, it would have to be on property that we actually have legislative authority over, which is this property for this subdivision. We can't, I don't, can we dictate something on a county right-of-way?
So, you can, you can require it to be, and assuming, there's a vote to be had on the waiver. But assuming you wanted a sidewalk to move south to roughly the edge of the property, you could require that to be done and leave it up to the developer's team to figure out if that's inside the property lines or in the right-of-way. Because that's a process and a request that would have to go through the county commission, whether it was a dollar or not. I don't, I don't pretend to know how they're gonna land on that.
Right.
But you just, I think, say, bring it to the south property line and adjacent to the right-of-way and let that figure out how that's gonna happen. Unless, unless you can certainly say, no, we're not gonna approve the waiver, come back with a final plan. I mean, that's also an alternative.
I'd prefer to approve it requiring the sidewalk be extended. And if they went to the county and the county said no when they came back, then, you know, I wouldn't be, you know, I would then vote to approve it if they, you know, didn't have the ability to do it. But I'd certainly like them to be able to do it if they had the ability to.
Well, and I think you see the boardwalk on the other side of the road is not in the right-of-way. You know, it comes through. So, there's parts of right-of-way, that's what we're talking about with the eneasements, platted easements. There's our common areas. Some are in the right-of-way, some are not.
And the sidewalk would be in the county right-of-way. We amended the subdivision regulations a few years ago to allow this body to require the sidewalk to either be installed in that right-of-way, and if that authority, having jurisdiction, denied that, that the sidewalk would then be installed inside the property line.
That's what I needed to know.
And the final plat would be the one that would clarify where, if it was needed as an easement, if it couldn't fit in the right-of-way, the final plat, when you saw that after construction, would come back and, you know, do marcate that easement if needed.
Is the staff recommendation worded correctly? Or the waiver recommendations worded correctly? It says not install sidewalks along the south side of Tall Paul Way. But they're shown on the south side, not on the north side.
Correct. I corrected it on the, on the slides.
Okay.
It is, it is on the north side from the entrance to the beginning of Lot 20 inside the development where the sidewalk waiver was requested to not be installed inside the development.
And there it is highlighted on the...
I caught, thank you for catching that.
I'll say for the record, if anybody was wondering. I think my concerns about accessibility of the green spaces, I'd rather not get into, I think people will make their way into it, into that gully, and I'd rather see that evolve than have you blaze through a trail if, you know, I'm picturing an 18-inch trail. And I think that will just happen. So, I'm gonna let that go.
Well, the public hearing's been closed. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest in light of the waivers is the planning commission to individually vote on the waivers first, and then you can vote on the case, just so we're clear for the record.
Okay.
And essentially, there are two requests as part of one of the waivers. You can certainly, you can choose...
Yeah, we kinda need three.
...amend that way approval, if you wanna approve one, for example, and not, but require the sidewalk south of the entrance.
I'd prefer if we invited into three that way, one waiver being the...
The only, the only thing I would, my only hesitation there in think this through, we have to advertise waivers? So, but I think you can approve, strike through one section of as it's advertised.
You can add conditions to it.
I wouldn't wanna split it into another waiver, though, that we did not advertise.
Okay.
All right.
What do you need?
Yeah, the first waiver is the 40-foot right-of-way.
Yeah.
I move we approve waiver for the 40-foot right-of-way for Windrow Circle.
I have a motion to approve the 40-foot right-of-way. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Second waiver is to not require sidewalks inside the, on both sides, inside the subdivision, and to not require the sidewalk going to the south. Do I have a motion for that waiver?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the first half going up to Lot 20 and not, but not install and not agree to the waiver of, or have the sidewalks installed along South Section Street.
So, I have a motion to approve the waiver inside the subdivision, but not on the south side of the subdivision on Section Street. Do I have a second for that? All right, any further discussion? All in favor for that waiver, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, that passes unanimously as well. Do I have a motion for the subdivision now? Which should be subject to the waivers and staff recommendation.
I move we approve SD 25.02 Windrow preliminary plat, subject to staff recommendations.
Do we need to put "and" the waivers also in that?
That's part of the recommendations.
Oh, the waivers are part of the staff recommendations. Is that good enough for you, Chris?
You voted on them. We just wanna make sure they went through. So, I think the way it was made, the motion was made would be, would account for all.
I would include the specification of what you want on South Section Street for extending the sidewalk, 'cause I think as the plat is shown, it doesn't show a sidewalk or boardwalk or anything. So, not trying to overcomplicate it, but I would include a detail of that as part of your motion.
If we do it, then I move we approve SD 25.02 Windrow preliminary plat, subject to staff recommendations. And with the addition of the sidewalk on the south side of Section, going down Section Street of the subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, do we still have a discussion on this or motion? We do?
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All right, any further discussion?
The biggest thing is if it's on the property with, that's gonna be within the city limits, it would be better to not use the word sidewalk and use boardwalk, because our wetland ordinance would not allow them to fill in that wetland area for a concrete sidewalk. That would not be approved.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest maybe just pedestrian access.
Yes.
Okay, I'll just amend mine and just strike sidewalk and put in pedestrian access.
There you go.
All right, do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
All right, any further? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? All right. Yes, we'll have a quick five-minute break, and then we'll come back and knock it out. Let Hunter stretch his back. Are you ready, Madam Secretary? All right, Hunter, are you ready?
Ready.
All right. You know, if this meeting were on Tuesday, I think half of y'all would be at the Colony for double discount night, and it'd be, and I would get to go home a little bit quicker. So, next time, maybe we should do this one on Tuesday when the Colony's involved. And I'd like to meet you there afterwards. But anyway, this is, one thing to remember with this subdivision is a lot of what you hear, heard on some of the other subdivisions, this, this is a tourism district zoning. It's a one-of-a-kind item. We look at that in the subdivision regs, and that's what our review includes. It doesn't include what real estate agent said or subdivision regs. Those are civil issues that we don't frankly deal with. We deal with, does it meet the requirements as, as we have for the, for the project? Not, you know, anything outside of that scope. So, remember that. And Hunter, if you go ahead, and also we'll let, if each person just will keep your comments to two or three minutes, if somebody has said what's on your mind, you know, then we've already heard it, so we don't need to have it again. But, but we know through the letters, most of the issues and concerns, obviously, we, you know, hear those loud and clear, and we will certainly address those as we can. So, with that said, Hunter?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mike's actually gonna give a quick, the presentation, just like he did with Windrow, as it relates to the subdivision regulations and the scope of the preliminary plat review. I just wanted to kinda give a little bit of a history on this project. As Lee said, there's certain things that we will not be able to accomplish. But, but for anyone that is not aware, how this project, the TR, known as the TR District or Collinian Thogran, has evolved. Initially, in 2010, there was an ordinance that essentially created TR zoning. And there's, there's a section in our zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations for anything that wants to be zoned TR. There's also a set of guidelines that were adopted along with this rezoning for this particular acreage. That is not in the zoning ordinance. It's, it's within the codified ordinance as it was adopted in 2010. That set up special rules and regulations for this district. I believe the adjacent property to the north asked for that, was received a copy... was received a copy. Um, I don't think I've had anyone within Battles Trace ever asked for that. Do a public records request, anything like that. They live there. They can get a copy. Um, so there's a lot of things, I think, that would be clear, that would be cleared up with a lot of the questions on what can be done. We're looking at that in, as well as how it was amended. I believe there was four or five zoning amendments after that. Um, an annexation, multiple phases of, of preliminary plats. Um, there was three different engineers that were involved in the drainage, I believe, beginning early on. And before it came into the city, there was an approval from the county years prior to that. It's a completely different project, different scope of project. So there's a lot of history here. And what we're reviewing this against is that zoning and subdivision regulations. They're very customized to the acreage out here. So just wanna say that before we get started. Um, that document is available. It, it's not a secret. It's tied to it. It just doesn't reside in our zoning ordinance. So, Mike, if you wanna take over for this subdivision?
So this is case SD 25.04. It's a preliminary plat, public hearing to consider the request of the applicant Sawgrass Consulting on behalf of the owner of PCH Hotels and Resorts RSA. It's in Phase Nine of Battles Trace. It's an 81 lot major subdivision. It's approximately 22.4 acres, located on the north side of Battles Road in east, on the eastern and west side of Colony Drive. The property is zoned TR Tourism Resort District. On the screen, you can see the zoning map on your left and the aerial on your right. Uh, the aerial, the area that's highlighted, this particular phase of this development is the two southern portions and a very small piece of that southern larger portion. The rest of it will be, uh, the future phases of Battles Trace. On the screen is that preliminary plat with the site data table. Some general comments, it's part of the TR District, and if approved, will be the next phase of Battles Trace. The TR District requires that the overall gross density for residential areas be no greater than three and a half units per gross area, and shall provide at least 20% of open or green space. Both of those conditions are met. Currently, there are three to four additional phases to be anticipated similar in nature to Phase Nine and the other previous phases. So the proposed subdivision is a portion of the 99 acres that annexed in the city into 2019. That was ordinance number 1650. And that annex application indicated is a residential use with the proposed number of lots being 250 plus or minus. That ordinance 1650 also restricted it to low-rise single-family residential. There is confusion between single-family residential as being created in the TR District, having a different edition, different definition of single-family residential than Fairhope's standard definition in the zoning ordinance. On the screen is a copy of that application for reference. So the definition in Fairhope's zoning ordinance for dwelling use for the single family is a detached dwelling designed for and occupied by one family. Fairhope zoning ordinance goes on to define other dwelling uses separately. The zoning ordinance in the TR District has low-rise residential zone with those permitted uses being highlighted below, which includes cluster homes, patio homes, duplexes, multifamily units, apartments, condominiums, townhouses, houses, and zero lot homes. So I wanted to be clear that the definition that we usually look at for our standard subdivisions, like we just looked at Windrow for that single family, is different than the definition for single family designated for the TR District. The utilities, water, sewer, and gas provided by the City of Fairhope may require a construction cost. Power is Riviera and AT&amp;T is a communications provider. For the drainage, uh, the drainage for this is a little complex as well. Some of the drainage was previously constructed in other phases for future phase anticipation. Uh, so I kinda, I'll run through this. Basically, there's a ridge line that runs through the middle of the site, which separates the drainage basins to the east and west directions. There's one detention pond proposed on the southwest corner, and it generally lies on the west side of the ridge. Uh, this pond is routed to an existing 18 inch pipe that was stubbed out during the Phase Five, uh, construction, and will ultimately be routed to the 18 acre lake and an adjacent one acre pond prior to being discharged from the western portion of the development. All the water on the east side of the ridge will drain into an existing two acre wet detention pond, uh, located on the golf course. And this detention pond was constructed during Battles Trace Phase Seven, and was designed to accommodate both water quality and detention requirements for the developed area located within Phase Nine. Uh, the staff has received several phone calls and emails regarding the next phase. Uh, all of that correspondence was included in your packet, along with the two petitions that were received from the Hilltop subdivision and Battles Trace subdivision property owners. The landscaping, uh, we didn't get a traditional tree survey, and the landscaping plan illustrates five trees that are being saved, um, and are.
Hey, um, we're gonna have a public hearing. It'll be your chance in a few minutes, please. Go ahead.
So highlighted in red, um, in the staff's opinion, these steeply graded slopes should have more trees and shrubs to provide both long-term buffers and a natural habitat. Uh, and that's what we wanted to bring that up for discussion this evening. Uh, bottom of your screen is that, is the landscaping plan and the drainage plan side by side, the areas highlighted are the areas of concern. There were additional landscaping that was installed on the northern side, but did not, did not continue all the way through where the area of disturbance was going to be done. Uh, on the slide, this, we need to label the remainder of that property. As I mentioned at the beginning, the northernmost large property. We're only affecting a small portion of this. So that lot is being affected. So we need, this needs to be a numbered lot with this plat to not leave a remnant piece just left out. And that could be cleared up at final plat. But we do need a label as a lot and include that entire boundary for the subdivision plat. Staff's recommendation of SD 25.04, Battles Trace Phase Nine, recommend approval with the following condition, reflect the remaining property as a lot of record, as a lot number on the plat, and show the entire boundary of the property. And staff, on behalf of staff, I'm happy to answer any questions. And we do have the engineer record with us this evening that can answer questions on behalf of the applicant.
All right, any questions for staff at this time? All right, in that case, is there anyone here on behalf of Sawgrass? Oh, Tim, I don't see you back there. Come on up.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, planning commission members. Um, I'm Tim Lawlo with Sawgrass Engineering on behalf of, uh, PCH Hotels and Resorts. Um, I, obviously, there's a lot of questions and comments received from the public. I can address some of those now, or I would prefer, if it's okay with y'all, to let, let whoever wants to talk. That way we can just get up and address them at one time.
whichever way you prefer.
Okay. And then, um, also have with me Michael Mann with Dequette Architecture. Uh, he was gonna give a brief presentation at this time, if that's appropriate with y'all. Thank you.
As Tim mentioned, my name's Michael Mann. I'm with Dequette Architecture and Design. And before we got into questions, we thought it'd be helpful to walk through some of the projects, um, design, vision, and goals. So, uh, really, when we set out to design a project, we're looking at, um, creating some overarching inspiration imagery and also goals for the project. So one was to celebrate and stay true to what makes Fairhope and Colony a great place to live. Uh, provide connections to the community, to build upon the existing pedestrian network, and provide new community gathering spaces. Uh, provide human scale walkability. So you'll see throughout the design, we have sidewalks, tree-lined streets, uh, porches in all the residences, and, um, and basically create a, a nice, pleasant, walkable neighborhood. And then a new active use. So this is, uh, basically linking a lot of the, um, special places throughout the development to each other and create new pocket parks and green spaces for community gathering. So, uh, one overarching goal was, um, to provide a range of housing products that provide a whole life, whole stage of life housing choice for people that love the neighborhood and wanna stay in the neighborhood throughout all the, um, different stages of their life. And one tool we are using is, um, a pocket park block plan. So, the idea here is you have, um, townhouses and duplexes anchoring the corners. And these are designed like large mansion houses that feel, fit in nicely with the overall architecture, character, and scale. And then you'll have a few cottage twins and townhomes on the perimeter of the parks. So these would have, be park under townhomes with porches facing the park area. And then you'll have some large, single-family homes on a range of lot sizes that are dual-fronted. So you have some that, you'll have a face that fronts the street and also a face that, um, backs up to the community park. And so that's the neighborhood pocket park in the middle with pedestrian connectivity through hike bike trails and, um, different sidewalks that, that link all these parks throughout the entire neighborhood development. So these are some of the inspiration images we used, um, to guide the architectural design of the neighborhood, starting from the single-family estates that lean into a lot of, um, of what is beautiful about the Fairhope and Colony areas. Uh, we have some single-family cottages designed. These are some of the inspiration images. And then the townhomes are, as I mentioned, these are scattered throughout, but really are designed to anchor certain points of the site, and are designed to look like large mansion homes that fit into the neighborhood character with the goal of, um, high-quality design and execution similar to the existing Colony neighborhood. So that was the presentation. If you wanna, if we wanna open up the floor for Q and A.
Can you show us how the, um, uh, Tim, are you, are you through, or do you have anything to add? Can you show us, when you mentioned the walkability, how, can you show us how that's gonna work with, with this portion being tied into the rest of the project, you know, the future and past phases?
Then we can pull up. And Tim, do you wanna speak to this?
Cause you touted the sidewalks, and there's some places that where there aren't sidewalks. And just wonder kinda how people.
So we have, uh, there are sidewalks all within the development. We have stubs, subouts to the future.
Hey, y'all will have your chance, please.
So, there are sidewalks in, in this part of the development, um, that will provide connectivity to the remaining property to the west, as well as the remaining property to the north. Then there's approximately a 200 foot elevated boardwalk that connects it back over to Phase Six where the existing mailhouse is.
All right. Let me just, y'all have any questions for the developer at this time? All right, thank you. If you'll stay up front, Tim, I'll go ahead and call you back after the public hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Um, when you come up, if you'll have, state whatever you'd like, please, if it's been stated. Um, I'm gonna take notes. And at the end of the, uh, questions, I'm gonna call Tim up and let him answer, uh, whatever questions you have, whatever comments you have. We will listen and note those. When you come up, please state your name and your address for our secretary to put you in our public record.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Manning, and I live at 934 Hibiscus Way in the Colony. Members of the Fairhope Planning Commission, I know you've received the petition from the residents of the Colony at the Grand opposing the Phase Nine plan for carriage and townhomes. Approximately 200 homeowners signed this petition. The homeowners of the Colony are deeply concerned over the continual deviation from the original development plan and the loss of character in the neighborhood. The homeowners would like the developer to continue the original plan for the development of single-family homes comparable to the original Phase One through Eight builds. One of the tenants of the TR District is to provide a stable environmental character compatible with surrounding areas. The Colony at the Grand has evolved far away from what was originally promised to the city from the inception of the TR District. The original vision of a community of single-family homes is being lost. Townhomes and carriage homes will increase the area population and density while changing the promised subdivision bill plan. Large parking lots are unsightly and noisy in a subdivision setting. Under the latest plan, the parking lots have been labeled as common area parking, which is deceptive. Narrow two-lane roads provide entry into the proposed Phase Nine subdivision. There is currently no room for turnoffs into the subdivision, creating a congestion and safety problem. With the addition of a new subdivision on the east side of Section Street, this corridor will be extremely busy. There has been, has there been a traffic study conducted for these narrow roads with no shoulders? And because the city did not hold the developer to city standards, the road is narrow at the Section Street gate entrance. Anyone driving down these roads surrounding the Colony and Hilltop will find roads in disrepair and crumbling from the edges. Close housing would increase susceptibility and risk to loss by fire. Has access by fire trucks been studied for human and property safety? A recent house fire in the Colony had a delayed response by over five minutes due to subdivision entry issues. Issues with our access gates have been a problem for over two years, and there is little confidence that police, fire, and ambulance can respond in an emergency situation, as there have been numerous attempts to repair the gates, only to have them immediately fail again. Does the city have a plan to ensure its citizens are safe? Will you hold the developer accountable for emergency response delay? The city has viewed a proposed rezoning for an apartment complex on Greeno Road north of Publix at Point Clear in a negative way. Primary negative reasons were oversaturating infrastructure and community support. This proposed apartment complex was less than seven tenths of a mile from the proposed Phase Nine on a much better road system. Councilman Burrell said recently in a meeting, the city's population is getting too big. Councilman Martin agreed and stated, I believe in property rights, but in smart growth too. A need to slow down, take a breath, make sure we address all concerns, water, drainage, traffic, density, get all our ducks in a row. Councilman Robinson thought it important to seek a balance between the owner's property rights and what is a benefit to the community as a whole, impacts on the infrastructure, density, and schools. Councilman Boone mentioned the property rights of the neighbors. Each displayed concerns about density and overgrowth in Fairhope. Here is a comment from a recent home purchaser. I closed on our home on 12324, and there was never any mention of the planned development less than 100 yards from our front door. We had conversations with the sales office about the road that had been cut into the woods, meaning more homes in the near future. However, there was never a mention that this next phase would be any different than what we had seen throughout this development. I will reiterate, contrary to the developer's advertising and marketing materials as of January 2025 for Phase Nine, this is a deceptive and dishonest practice by the developer's sales office. Included in the packet presented by Sawgrass was a statement regarding the deviation from the community master plan that I quote, "RSA decided to try this and see how it goes. This might be a gamble RSA can afford to take, but asking the homeowners of the Colony to jump on that roulette wheel with them is irresponsible and a total disregard of the investment homeowners have already made in the Colony." RSA does not allow residents of voice at the table to express concerns about the Colony at the Grand. No completed phases with, within the Colony have been turned over to the resident, nor does a resident have a seat on the HOA board as they have stated in their own Colony at the Grand brochure. This has resulted in a gradual erosion of the community that was once a sought-after option to reside. By allowing RSA to continually develop without regard, the city is complicit in turning a deaf ear and blind eye to the concerns of the homeowners within the Colony. In closing, I respectfully request that the Fairhope City Planning Commission listen to the valid concerns of the 200 homeowners of the Colony and disapprove the proposed Phase Nine plan of carriage and townhomes. I'd like to add that just because you can, doesn't mean you should. Thank you.
Thank you. Was anybody else supposed to speak to this item? Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Bill Holman. I reside at 134 Mulberry Lane here in Fairhope. 2016, my wife and I took a journey to decide. 2016, my wife and I took a journey to decide where we would retire. We visited five southern states. We had seven criteria that we were looking for. Fortunately for us, we met all seven criteria here in Fairhope and at the Colony. Over the last seven years, almost eight years now, we've seen a tremendous growth, not only in Fairhope, but in the Colony. My question to the Planning Commission, and I think from most of the residents that live in the Colony, is this really Morgan &amp; Morgan? Are we getting to that point where it's too large a community? This is the first time tonight that I heard that we're looking at now an additional four phases. Another concern I have is safety. Where are we headed with the safety for the community? Debbie did an excellent job in her presentation outlining her concerns. What I did not hear from Sawgrass was, what's, what are the lighting? The lighting in the Colony is poor at best. And I think that needs to be a serious consideration as you move forward. Also, my other concern is, as Troy mentioned in his presentation, I have comments, is the traffic, not only on Twin Beach Road, Battles Road, and Section Street. People are moving at too quick of a speed. So, I thank you for your consideration and listening to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak to this item?
I live at 436 Colony Drive. I have lived in the Colony for a number of years now and I am a retired design engineer. And I want to speak to safety. In listening to the presentation, we discussed drainage. And I believe there are two retention ponds. And I would be very interested in knowing who has done the calculation and when those calculations were done, particularly on the, a large lake called Lakewood, but is a large retention pond, of course. There have been many changes in that during the time that I have been living there, in its volume, in the amount of stilt that is acquired. And I would be very curious as to who made the calculations that it could be able to adapt and take the drainage from the new extension into Phase 9. Is there an answer?
He'll come up and answer that in a few moments.
Okay.
What is your last name?
Hupp, H-U-P-P. So, the question is, when were those calculations made? Because if they were made anytime before the last few years, that lake volume has definitely changed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak to this item?
It's me again. I'm Troy Vickers, as I said before, 248 Cuban Lily in the Colony. And as I said before, I am a registered professional engineer in the state of Alabama. We moved here from Houston and moved in at 22. And as Debbie said, we got the same answers. This is what we're going to do. This is the plan and everything that we still have today. No mention after, and many of us have made million-dollar investments here, no mention of this, of this kind of future development. Also, the, we could talk about the present contractor and the things that were said that they would be doing, that they're not doing, but we'll leave that together. To address the presenter just before me, the stormwater silt plan, there is no stormwater plan for the Colony. Lakewood is basically filled with sediment. Clear Creek, Point Clear Creek, as it's called, is full of sediment. The Goth Lake is full of sediment, all coming from construction, all red clay. We talked, beautiful pictures, by the way, by the architect. I asked a question at a meeting that we had at Lakewood. I said, "Well, how many trees are going to be left? None. We're going to clear-dose it. Clear-dose everything out there." There are a significant amount of trees that are large size, there's a significant amount that may not be live oaks. There's a significant amount of oaks there that could provide a buffer. But the answer we got is we're going to, eh, dose it. And if you look at the existing, the last phase that was done, well, not Phase 8, but Phase 7, there's no trees been replanted. Houses butt up to each other, back-to-back, no buffer, and no trees. Everything was pre-dozed and beautiful, beautiful groves of oak trees, live oaks, red oaks, potted oaks, and some pines. It was said about sidewalks, we don't have sidewalks. And that's misleading when we say we have sidewalks, because you think sidewalks go down the street. We have pathways through the subdivision that are poorly maintained, so we can walk through them. That's what they're calling sidewalks. So, don't be that way. We already talked about safety along section. I'll leave it at that. The drainage plan, there might be a drainage plan for this section, but I haven't seen a massive drainage plan. We're talking about another subdivision going in, basically across the road from us. We've got Hilltop that was there. There's additional that's coming in. Where's the master drainage plant? Well, I haven't seen one. I mean, maybe it's hiding. I don't know. Do I have to ask, do a Freedom of Information Act to get a master drainage plan? I mean, landscaping? There is no landscaping. Very, very little landscaping put in by RSA and the contractor of development. All these beautiful trees that were, you saw on the video, on the presentation, false. Not there. Lot sizes have gotten smaller and smaller and smaller. Setbacks have got smaller and smaller and smaller. I could basically step from one roof to the other. Talked about fire hazard, big fire hazard. Emergency access, I saw fire trucks try to go through the neighborhood that could not make turns on the street. They had to back up, all of them, all 10 of them, back up, turn, back up and turn, make four passes before they could make a curve. That's not designed correctly. I can tell you as a PE, that's not a good design. Suggestion, if they want to build this this way, let's take it, move it over on Twin Beach, put a huge buffer between where we are now, trees, nice park area, and turn what's already existing over to the homeowners association and let the owners take care of what we have now and not have to deal with this. If that's what RSA wants to do, they got plenty of land there to do that with, unless they are doing nothing out of greed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Thomas Hogg. I'm, I live at 812 Geranium Drive. Looking out my front door, I'll be looking directly at Phase 9 across the street or behind my neighbors across the street. We have been coming to Fairhope for 10-plus years. First time I came here, I said, "This is a great place. I want to retire here." We've been back many times, got a lot of friends here. We knew that the Colony was a place that we wanted to buy a home. It had everything that we were looking for in a home. I'm, I'm really concerned now that I'm here that I didn't read more information. I got over 200 pages of governing documents and the whole history of the Colony. And my real estate agent said, "Read it if you want to, but you can't change a thing." So, okay, well, I'll accept that. You know, feel pretty good about this place. Everything I've looked at, every illustration of this community was continuing to build a single-family home community, detached, single-family homes. And everything on the website that I've seen, every piece of literature was identical to this, the new phases of development would look a lot like what we have seen and what we purchased. The density issue is double the density of the existing development. I did ask, I did ask some questions. 377 lots are now available in the first eight phases. There is about 175 acres. That comes out to less than two units per acre in the entire development so far. Phase 9 is now going to have 3.6 units per acre. That's double the amount of density that we are accustomed to. To me, that is too drastic of a change to be butted right up against what we currently have. I do have a question about the highlighted orange areas up there, because it sounded like staff was recommending more landscaping, more trees, more buffer, but that is not listed in the staff's recommendations for approving this request. So, if there could be some response to that. We love Fairhope. We thank you for everything you do. Lee, I met you the first night I moved to Fairhope on December the 3rd.
Yes, sir.
Two months ago today. Harris, I met you as well. So, we're glad to be here. We want to be a part of this community and we would like to see Phase 9 a little more consistent with what we've been accustomed to. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm at 6902 Petty Old Drive in Hill, in Hilltop. My wife and I have our home on Lot 6, which is one of the six lots that directly abut this, this new development. We've, you've seen our petition. You said you've seen that, that information. That petition was signed by 100% of the Hilltop's residents, all 36 of us. So, we have several concerns. I'm going to highlight a few of those things here. But we're basically asking that the commission recommend that the developer reconsider clearcutting the, the common areas that abut about the Hilltop Southern Borderline. I'm glad this, this, this picture's still up here. You just mentioned the orange up there in the, in that top corner. The, the area we're talking about is that, that northernmost.
Jim, talk up.
Okay, thank you, Bill. The, the area we're talking about is, is that northernmost strip there. That's where we're concerned, that, that area, one of my neighbors is going to talk about it here in a second, is going to define what's in that area. That upper, upper right-hand orange, orange area, it doesn't need any, any landscaping. It's got some awesome trees in there, very big trees in there. And then everything to the right of that, in that triangle, if they clearcut that, that's slope, that is the existing slope there. There's no, there's no more grading that needs to be done. They haven't changed that at all. There are plenty of trees in there, too, and very large trees in there as well. So, we're, we're really questioning the whole concept of clearcutting the entire area. And we're asking that, 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 that area that butts Hilltop, that we preserve the trees in that and the natural habitat in that area. And that's in our petition. We've been told by the developer that the entire area in question, I think we've said this a couple of times, is going to be clearcut to facilitate grading. We believe that's unnecessary and it's at odds with the spirits of the, of the, the regulations that govern the development. And, and I'm, I'm referring to the regulation, the, the Fairhope subdivision regulations, which include the exemptions that are in the TR District. Now, I may have heard, misunderstood what was said earlier. If there's another group of exemptions that are not in that document, I've never seen those and, and, and I ask, I've, I've, y'all mentioned that you've had several calls. Well, I'm one of the persons that have made several calls. So, if there are other exemptions out there and we're not aware of them, then I'm greatly disappointed by that. I may have misunderstood what you said, but, but I can tell you that the document I looked at, I've seen all the, it, it includes the exemptions for, for the TR District. I'm another engineer. I mean, we, we've had a few up here. So, and I've worked in the pulp and paper industry for 45 years. And I've, and I have managed multimillion-dollar projects in Brazil, New Zealand, most of the United States. And I've spent my whole career developing and executing large projects. I say that just to make it clear that I'm more than a little bit familiar with what it takes to develop and execute a project. And I'm, one thing I know for sure is there are always alternatives. There's always different ways to do things. And that good projects, the most successful projects are the ones that sincerely address the issues and concerns of all the constituents involved, all the people that are impacted by that particular project. Clearcutting this area, this entire area, might be the easy thing to do from, from a construction standpoint, but I think there's 100% of the, of the Hilltop development and probably 100% of the, of the Colony folks here tonight that agree that's not the right way to do it. Our community, we don't have regulations and ordinances solely to make it easier for the developer and the construction, constructors to complete their pro, their projects. We primarily have these regulations and ordinances to assure that our community grows and thrives in accordance with the visions and the desires of the people that live in this area. So, we're asking you to consider these regulations and to weigh in on how this clearcutting of this area for a short-term convenience aligns with the TR District purpose statement. And I'm sure you're all familiar with that purpose statement. It's, it's Article, Article 4, Section G, Paragraph 1 in the, in the, in the Fairhope subdivision regulations. In part, that paragraph requires the development in a TR District to encourage, to be encouraged to preserve the natural amenities of the land. And later in that paragraph, it says, "To provide a stable environmental character compatible with the sound, surrounding areas." We all know the character of Fairhope and the surrounding areas. That's primarily why most of us live here. And, you know, it's, the, it's the unnecessary cutting down of every tree in the area, it doesn't preserve the natural amenities of the land and it certainly doesn't provide a stable environmental character compatible with the surrounding area. So, there's a big disconnect as, as we look at this thing. I've learned a lot about this purpose statement over the years. I understand when that document was created. I understand the people that were involved in that. I understand the politics that went on in that, because I've, I've learned that over the last three years, being in, in the area again. The first phase of Colony was permitted and the developer was asked, and they agreed, to create a buffer of trees along Battles Road and, and preserve an area of oak trees that, where Battles wraps around and turns and runs back into Twin Beach. They were, they were asked to do that. They agreed to do that. And presumably, that was to satisfy the intent of the purpose, purpose statement that's in the, in the, in the regulations. That area is the nicest feature of the Colony. It is. We're Lakewood members. We're over there all the time. My wife and I walk through, through the Colony all the time and we see all the things that have been mentioned here by, by speakers so far that are not up to snuff. But there are some things that were done right back then. That purpose statement is still in there. It hasn't changed. It hasn't been taken out, hasn't been expunged, and it's still there. And unless and until it is removed, its intent needs to be followed and, and it should be adhered to with each new expansion of the Colony. The developer's going to tell you, going to tell us, I'm sure, in a few minutes. The developer's going to tell you, going to tell us, I'm sure in a few minutes, that the reason this, this area that I was referring to up here across the top is going to be clear cut is because they're going to terrace that whole area. Right now, there's a nice gradual slope to the south coming off of the Hilltop property. They're going to take that and within about sixty feet, they're going to, they're going to basically cut that area, cut down all those trees and slope that and terrace that whole area so they can put, so they can position these houses the way they, the way they want to. And that's, I understand, that is a play. That is one way they will work to, to develop an area like this, but is it the right way? Is it keeping intent, is it keeping the intent of, of this purpose statement? And is it listening to?
Sir, we've got more people to speak, so if you could wrap it up and get a chance.
I understand. I'll wrap this thing up in a second. There, there are other ways to do, to do this. Three years ago, I saw a, a proposal for this same area that had lots that backed up directly to Hilltop. And those lots, you could have preserved all the trees in the back of those lots and left that area. And that area would have been a natural storm management system that could have been used. I appreciate your time and I hope you'll consider what we've said and consider all the concerns that, that the Colony residents have brought up this evening.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Andy Callahan. I reside at sixty-nine seventy Petty Old Drive. I am not an engineer. I am a forester and a certified arborist with over fifteen years' experience managing natural resources across the southeast United States. I also live, I'm blessed to live, I back up to the intermittent stream that the Windrobe subdivision has coming through and crossing under Section Street. I back up to that and I, I appreciate the, the developer that, that had the foresight to, to protect that area. And you lose that protection when, when that stream crosses onto the Colony neighborhood. And so I want to kind of address that. I noticed on the screen, it also said that, you know, there was not a, a tree survey provided. Well, I'm here to give you a little bit of a survey on the common area that Jim addressed that, that adjoins our Hilltop neighborhood. That sixty-foot wide common area directly adjacent to us is home to a pine hardwood forest comprised of a hundred and nine trees with diameter six inches and larger. Along with that was a very dense vegetation understory that provides a hundred percent natural screening. It's not only a visual barrier for the benefit of both residents of Hilltop and the Colony, but it's also part of a functional ecosystem that plays a critical role in controlling runoff, soil stabilization, and reducing erosion. Removing this vegetation will significantly increase the volume and velocity of water runoff, leading to sediment displacement into the intermittent stream that leads to that golf course pond that we've talked about and you've heard numerous stories about. I'm concerned with a lot of that sediment taking that path because beyond the golf course, where does that sediment end up? And, you know, it's going right into Mobile Bay and we've, you know, I don't need to explain to anybody what the situation is with sediment dumping and mud dumping in Mobile Bay right now. You know, as Jim mentioned, the, the Fairhope subdivision regulations for the TR district emphasize preserving natural amenities of the land and maintaining a stable environmental character compatible with the surrounding areas. Preserving this buffer aligns with those principles while also mitigating long-term environmental and financial costs associated with erosion control and water quality issues. Density and drainage were recently cited by this commission to those reasons for not approving the Legends of Point Clear development. And I urge you again to maintain this directive as well as uphold the intent of the TR district regulations that Jim outlined. And lastly, I'd like to highlight the Colony development on Time Lane, which is directly across from the Battles Place Apartments on Section Street. This is example poor erosion and water runoff management. I urge each of the commission, commission members to check Google Maps for Section Street just south of Time Lane. And you can go to Google Street View and see that sidewalk that runs along right there by the, that entrance to Time Lane. You can see a little bit of dip in that sidewalk where that ravine comes up from the golf course. That's May of twenty twenty-four, that image. Drive by there today and you'll see a pronounced dip in that sidewalk. Nobody uses that sidewalk because it dead ends right there, right across from the apartments. But a time is coming where that is going to be a major issue for Section Street. And what just happened in December just north of downtown, that washed out right there. We were about to have another situation just like that. So I just want to highlight the, the history of poor erosion control measures by the developer and just consider that when thinking about that intermittent stream that runs through there right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'll let one or two or three more people speak. If you've, we've got it on the density, the trees, the clearcutting, the drainage, the traffic. If you've got something new, bring it up. Otherwise, we've heard it.
Sorry. Sorry about that. But again, I'm Steve Cows. I live at sixty-eight seventy-eight Petty Old Drive in Hilltop, and I'm on lot nine over there. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and I just have a short speech. Hopefully, we'll get through it real quick. Four score and seven years ago, oh, no, I'm going to be, I'm going to be serious. So I'm actually going to speak about a slightly different bent on this, this subject.
Bring it on.
I'm in support of everything that's been said previously. On that, that being said, I realize that the developers have the right to develop their land and build out their property to the extent legally that they, that they see fit. We're all privileged to live here and more people want to move here for the development is inescapable. Hopefully, we can agree on ways to accommodate that development while preserving some of the inherent beauty of the existing native, native environment. Despite the injections, the objections being discussed here today, there is one feature of their, the developer's proposed, proposed plan that I do appreciate, and that's preservation of approximately sixty to sixty-five foot buffer along the northern border, separating our property from the, from the Colony. At the same time, as has been stated previously, and I'll get past this quickly, we think that the plan to clearcut this land, removing all trees and vegetation, is a serious misstep. By its very nature, this project in its current form is going to eliminate.
We, we, we've got that and we're going to discuss that with our attorney and what the rights are on that and, and are aware of the clearcutting. So if you've got something else, please bring it on. But we, we understand that nobody in this room, except the engineer, wants to clearcut it.
Okay. Well, I, I, I mean, I, I do think that, that there are other issues. I'd like to talk about the environmental impact and the natural habitat.
And the last man, the net and the stream and the filling of the pond and the trees and the neighbors.
No, I'm talking about the, the birds and the bees and the.
Got it.
And the animals that live back there.
Okay.
I live, I live back there and I have for two and a half years. And I've grown to love the nature that is back there. There's no way to, I guess I'll dispense with some of what I was going to say. So there are numerous, numerous bird species, innumerable really, some of which are yellowhammer northern flickers, which is the state bird of Alabama, by the way. There are also owls, heron, gulls that fly, fly through there. A heron lands in our retention pond frequently. We have hawks and doves that are producing, nesting and producing back there. We also have many small animals that live there, the fox squirrels amongst the things that I think people that are from Fairhope, I, I know I'm from Tennessee, I've never seen one before, but, but anyway, plus the insects that are back there, the, the native pollinators, the bees and the butterflies. This is all part of an ecosystem that has been there for, now honestly, I don't know how many years, but it's been there for a long time and those are going to be completely destroyed. That will not be replaced by what is being proposed here. If a portion of that currently existing natural habitat can be preserved, I think it would be beneficial. So, you know, what we at Hilltop would like to propose is that we ask to preserve this as, at least part of it, as, as a natural habitat and continue that on the phases in the future that abut Hilltop. And what we'll, what we'll have is a wildlife corridor that extends from Section Street going west and then can go north to the properties along Twin Beach. This is in keeping with the community goal of environmental sustainability and low-impact development and in keeping with the planning principles that are laid out in the recently released Fairhope Comprehensive Plan. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I think I'm the last one.
Thank you. I, I was a little arrogant thinking I thought, I knew what you were going to say and, and you took that a different direction. I appreciate that. Yes, sir. All right, one more person, ma'am, if you could.
I'm Sharon Durham at two thirty-three Cuban Lily Drive. And I won't, since this was a little longer, I'll try to make it very short and touch on the one thing that's not been really addressed. Our street, which falls, I guess it would be at the southwest corner of Phase Nine, presently is drawn to have a home back up directly behind us. So when we moved here and purchased our lot, we were told that there would be construction back there. We knew it would happen, but we were told that there would be some sort of border of trees, some, I don't know how thick, but we were led to believe that we would not be budding up back-to-back to a backyard neighbor. As you can see, if you will look as this is drawn, we would be, we have a twenty-five foot setback. We have a drainage easement at the back of our property line. The neighbor behind us will have a twenty-five foot setback. We're being told we can't even plant trees on our back property line because it's a drainage easement. So now we, as they have it drawn, we have no border. All we have is a barbed wire fence between us and a neighbor. And I would just once again ask that if we're going to follow the lines of everybody having the same property look and landscape as are in the original phases of this development, then we should all be afforded that. You know, just because I bought in Phase Five doesn't mean that I shouldn't have some sort of separation from a backyard neighbor. We don't have fences and that's great. But I think, I don't think anybody wants to sit on their back porch and no further hardly than from, you know, me to you and we're staring at a neighbor. So I do think that I, I would be happy and I know a lot of my neighbors would be happy if somebody could address that issue.
Right, that's not really in our purview.
I understand, but it is important with the overall landscape and look of the subdivision. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Some very good questions. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Tim, you heard the comments and I've got to say, you know, when I would have walked around that lake, I work out there, I'm a member there, and I've walked through and messed up a pair of tennis shoes before with dirt on the, you know, coming across the road into the pond, you know, right on the north side of the lake there when that was done. And, you know, the erosion cloth was there, you know, no hay bales initially till that occurred and they had to get a skid steer in there to get the dirt off. And we had questions asking about, you know, the drainage plan has been updated, has the lake, you know,'s capacity been checked since it has had a fair amount of siltation, you know, and a couple of quick, in a couple, in a couple of times and quick one-time events. You heard the concern about the trees, the landscape and the drainage. You know, the traffic I know has been adjusted and the fire truck entry, you had to meet that. But, you know, my biggest question on this frankly is, and, and, you know, Battles, I, I voted for the Battles apartment across the road and, you know, we had that twelve-inch rain that just caused a nightmare up there because they, they cleared the roads and they didn't clear the entire spot at the same time to the point that the one nice thing about Lousy, you know, plans is that's what we learn from, not the good ones. And so we've since required that the roads have to be built. You know, on apartment-type projects, we don't allow the whole thing to be cleared. The, the roads have to be built first and then the area is cleared for the apartments. But it seems like y'all could be a little bit more creative, you know? I mean, with the birds, the insects, you know, my son has a native nursery that he's very into the insects feeding, the, the lizards and worms that feed the birds and has his bird list and, you know, I get into it also. Being an Auburn fan, I can't get into the yellowhammers quite as much. But is there not any kind of a way? It seems to me like with some creativity as smart as y'all are and the RSA could come in and develop the entire Robert Trent Jones golf tour, that y'all could figure out how to do this without clearcutting and leveling the whole thing from the get-go and leave some of these native areas.
I mean, Lee, there, there certainly is, I'm sure, another way to do it. It may cost five million dollars extra to build a, you know, six hundred. I mean, cost, as you know, cost factors into everything. I will say the areas selected to be cleared are areas of planted pines. The areas along the creek in the intermittent stream were selected to be left as natural as several acre preserve with natural big oak trees. You know, in my opinion, it makes sense to save the area where you have the nicer trees. I mean, it's not uncommon to, to cut down, you know, pine trees for development. And, and for the Hilltop residents, you know, they don't have a buffer on their neighborhood. Their, their property line is backed directly up to their exterior property line. So why, why would the burden of a buffer be put on us when we're doing residential development as well? If, if they could have incorporated a buffer when they built their subdivision. So it doesn't seem fair to even entertain the idea that we should be responsible for buffering another residential subdivision, in my opinion.
What about this triangle area?
The triangle area to the, to the east, we're not touching that.
And sorry, that was put together real quick. Where the area to the orange is, they're proposing to grade to the left of that grade and then replant. The area to the right of that orange area is not.
Is to be left natural.
Why does that area have to be graded at all that first? Why couldn't that be part of your erosion control, that first area? Just put a.
Which area are you referring to?
To the, just to the west of the orange.
So we, we are dealing with about thirty-seven feet of topography across, across this development. And we're, a lot of the existing residents were having homes that, that were, unfortunately in the previous phases, we, we left all the trees because there were nice oak trees and we wanted, we wanted to build around them.
All right, let's, let's let him speak.
Yeah, trees were cleared to construct houses just like they were in Hilltop and just like they are in any, any other subdivision. But the trees that were left, they could be left on the lots. What, what happens is when you get in the higher topography on the size of lots that are here and you can go drive around and look, there's several houses where you've got a ten-foot tall driveway that has to ramp up because of the topography, which in it almost becomes unbuildable. It comes unusable for the end user. And so given the fact that this, this area does not have the large sixteen-inch oak trees and the beautiful trees like the original phases do, you know, we made the decision collectively to, to clearcut it and grade it and, and provide better topography for the lots to be built on and replant street trees just like a subdivision in a farm field or subdivision that's been cleared. We left the, the existing oak trees where they are along the creek are left in place. I mean.
I see. But there's no, how, how much, hey, we're, we're trying to work something out here. If you can't let us do that, there's no reason for us to be here. How much elevation is there in that one section? I mean, there's no way that.
From the, from the south Hilltop property line to our south line of what would be.
No, I meant from the south Hilltop to the, to just that, that area between Hilltop and, and your north, that.
And, and the road there, are you saying existing elevation?
Just north of these, I have trouble seeing them, the, these, these lots, eighteen, you know, the, the lots.
I can't see.
If you come up here, I'd say, well, no, I can't. Yes, I can.
You can see it on your computer.
Just this, this area right here. Just this, this area right here. I mean, could that not be left? I mean, that's the area that most of the concern seems to be about.
We are, the proposed grading plan, there's approximately 10 to 12 feet of slope in that area. So to leave that area even, say, halfway vegetated would require a five-to-six-foot-tall retaining wall across that whole span, 700, 800 feet.
There's, that's, yeah, we can't, I mean, once the, no, no, I was saying, once the public hearing's closed, we can reopen it.
And I mean, we've, if we can pull the landscape plan back up, and we've added significant trees and shrubs there as, as a buffer on.
Go ahead, Tim.
That's fine. I'm just getting tired of trying to talk over people.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's right here on the left-hand side, the trees and stuff. Not only do we have trees on our alleyway road, but we have trees and shrubs all along the north property line. As a response to, to the feedback we received in the community meetings and that kind of thing. So we're trying to, you know, meet in the middle as much as we can, but as far as dictating, you know, what size buffer we leave on our property and how we choose to grade our property, I mean, quite frankly, I think that's RSA's decision.
Well, within reason, but on the other hand, I mean, they do make some good points of the, in the native wildlife of that area. If there's a way that can be a little bit more creative and leave some of those areas rather than wiping everything out that people come here for, and then starting over again, you know, planting crape myrtles and stuff like that that may or may not.
I mean, we can certainly look into replanting some native trees if that's, you know, if that would be preferred. And I'll be honest, I don't know, I'm not a landscape architect, I didn't draw these plans, I don't even know what's proposed there. You know, we subbed that out, and they meet their regs.
It was a, there is some native plants there, it does use the, but the problem is, it's only a portion. Even if we're looking at replanting, you know, that's still wide open where the orange is, you've just got steep slopes. The pousaclyes we just had, I think wax myrtle is one of the more prominent shrubs. Pousaclyes has more shrubs than, than this whole area around the perimeter. So I think the replanting of the hillside there, it's not, it's not green space, it's not usable, it's, it's a slope. So if we're going to look at that, you know, I do think it needs to have a landscape plan that is, warrants the quality of the rest of the development. Not saying you, yeah, yes.
I agree.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think we would be opposed to planting some native plants on that slope. But as far as leaving it as a buffer or not grading it and, you know, installing a $300,000 retaining wall, I certainly, I can't speak for the developer, but I, I don't foresee that being an option, or a feasible option anyways.
Commissioners, any questions?
So besides, besides for, like you say, in the lower areas where, you know, they have these, you know, drainage, as far as going back to the statement and purpose of the zoning and preserving the natural features, how does this plan, do you feel, besides for what you mentioned before, you feel like complies with that vision for this district?
I mean, it, we're preserving the natural features along the main, the gully line through there with the existing oak trees, and that area's been an amenities subdivision. They keep it brush-cut, and you can just, when you pull in Phase Six, it's the area on your right, it's beautiful, there's a walkway down there. We're connecting to that with a 200-foot elevated boardwalk, and preserving the prettiest area on this, this 23 acres.
Well, just technical questions about the open space and the green space. I mean, we've been talking about the quality of, I mean, this may just be that if you put 20% open space required, are the parking lots, it says common slash open space is part of the requirement, are the parking lots contributing to that?
No.
Because it's only 17.5% green space.
Well, the, the reason, so the development has already met the 20% green space in totality prior, so basically there's 0% provided, so we're going 17.5% over what we have to, and that's not including the sloped areas, we didn't include any of that. I believe there's a green space drawing in the slide somewhere, and it does not include the parking areas. Well, I don't, I don't see it.
And that was, even the phasing, as phasing has gone through, that's what I think a lot of people are missing out on. There was a lot of iterations and evolution of this project, and the green space was talked about at each time, so.
Commissioners, any more questions or concerns?
What year did we first approve this? 2019?
2010.
Are you talking about the original or the 99 acres that we're on now?
We were here, we were the only two here.
Yeah, I think the original, I think it was like earlier than.
I think it was around 2005.
Yeah, I think there was some like.
2010 was.
2010.
Or maybe when it came from the county to the city in 2010.
Started in county, and I think there had, there were some issues there with, yeah, there, yeah, that's right.
I'm just saying that I don't remember anything like this being presented on the.
Well, one thing is, you know, when we ask about, you know, when, when, you know, Art Dias and I asked about, you know, when we were bringing the new, y'all bringing the new land in, we said, you know, is this going to be single-family residential, and, you know, or what's it going to be? Is it going to be multifamily or single-family residential, et cetera? And y'all said, "Single-family residential," which I thought meant "single-family residential," you know? And not that I'm necessarily opposed to carte blanche, you know, against something like that, I mean, people get old and have to live somewhere. I know I am, but with that said, you know, it wasn't exactly what, what I was thinking. But I don't know, I just, you know, frankly, I mean, I know y'all have your rights, and I know, maybe this meets it somewhat, this is an unusual one, but, gosh, it just seems like y'all could do better on, on, you know, some of those areas there. I mean, I just.
With all due respect, we've offered, I've already offered to plant more native trees. I mean, what else is it specifically that's.
I just wonder, I just wonder if y'all could just kind of come back with a landscape plan that would be a little more dense that we could look at it prior to, you know, prior to voting for it.
Well, let me, we'll be happy to revise the landscape plan, but are you saying that the landscape plan we submitted does not meet the City of Fairer regs because staff approval said that it did? So that's where I'm a little confused. I mean, we're, we're happy to work with y'all, but as far as holding a vote up for us.
Hold on, Tim. Let me add, let me add one thing here.
Yeah.
You know, part of the, the conversation we're having here is because this document that says what landscaping matters leaves a lot of leniency in the developer's hands.
What document?
This is the zoning that goes along when it was adopted in 2010. So the tree ordinance doesn't apply directly. There are sections within, geographically within the development that it does apply, there's some that it doesn't. And the one thing we didn't get, and, and the only thing that's a gray area to me right now, is what is out there? What has been surveyed? Because there, there's no doubt, there's been, I think, five trees that are preserved, and, you know, the, I think the neighbors are saying there's more, we talked about this, it's pines. Well, even this document says 22-inch pines need to be protected.
And for the record, I would like to state, our survey crew did do a tree survey. They were instructed to shoot anything pines bigger than 20 inches and any hardwoods bigger than 18 inches. The five trees shown on this drawing are the ones that met those requirements.
And.
And so, go drive through the construction road and take a look. I mean, they're all six to eight-inch pines.
But we didn't receive that.
The arborist.
No, we did. If that's the case, then we did receive that. That's exactly what we got. We've got neighbors saying there's 17 trees over 20 inches, you know, that, if y'all would like us to go hire a third party to check, we can do that.
And that neighbor's area highlighted shows a big triangle where all the large oak trees are that we are not clearing. They also came on the property without permission from the property owner, and there's very, very limited information in there about the 109 trees they found, whether they're pines, whether they're, that says they're a mix of hardwoods and pines, if you read them between the lines.
There, there are no protections in, within the tree ordinance or within this ordinance for anything, the nine inches, the 10 inches, that's, that's great. There's no protections on those. And I will say, everybody's saying there's protections within the residential lots, but that would be residential lots that butts right up the property, to the property line just like Hilltop, and there would be no protections on those trees once they became residential lots.
That's correct.
I mean, that, that's a reality that the same thing can happen right now. We cannot prevent anyone in Hilltop from going cutting down a tree in their backyard.
I mean, the, the hard thing is, we've heard all this before, you know, we were, we were told one thing, and it's changed, and you can see how it's changed with phases over time, and gotten a lot less green and a lot more gray, and a lot less like a resort. And, you know, a lot more dense, and we're in an area that's experiencing rapid growth, and stormwater is increasing, runoff is increasing, and waste area is increasing. And there's, we hear all this, and usually it goes back to this is something to talk to the developer about, that we, we can't control. But I will say, it's moving further and further away from the definition of the tourist resort district.
Well, and I, I'd like to add something to that. You know, if, if you look at recent phases, a perfect example of what I'm trying to say about the difference in trees is if you look at Phase Six, the first area you come into off-section, the reason it looks different is because it's the same topography scenario as this. It's pine trees. The homeowners don't want 15 pine trees in their yard. They get cut down. People like to save 20-inch oak tree on their yard. So a lot of that decision is not up to the developer, it's up to the homeowner when they purchase a lot, whatever. And I may, I may be wrong. In a typical scenario, it is. But a lot of, I know personally, when I, I built a house in Lake Forest, I cut down every pine tree on there because I don't want pine trees falling on my house.
Well, we wouldn't do that.
Yeah, but just saying that, you know, you can put subdivision, you know, you have Owners Association regs and subdivision regs that can, you know, when we did a subdivision down on Point Clear, we required that you couldn't cut any trees other than where the footprint of your house was.
Right.
Just because we wanted to try to protect them down there. That was Burtwatch Lane down there.
I mean, so, and then the other issue with the, you know, the zoning and the creation of the district, and they mentioned, you know, the, the safety, well-being of the neighbors and the, and the area. So when the staff highlights, highlighted these very steep areas that will be clearcut and, you know, left to erode, and so we are to accept when we all live there and see that all the erosion control methods that have previously been used are failing and are not, are not working because, I mean, the, the lake is being silted in. So we are, I don't, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with saying, okay, you know, this extremely steep slope that's going to be clearcut, that we're going to use the same erosion control methods that we've used in the other, you know, parts of the development are going to be okay. I mean.
Just, just for the record, where are these massive erosion areas within existing development? Because I've never seen them. I, I'd like for the record, somebody to say where all this, you know, yeah, maybe active home site constructions, but, I mean, that's one of the most manicured subdivisions in this county. Actually, it is. Actually, it is.
Yeah, but Tim, I'm not, I'm not arguing that it's well-done, obviously people like it, I'm, we're discussing like.
I'm just, yeah, I'm making it seem like all the other phases are a bomb.
Where I got my tennis shoes messed up was just right where it makes that little jut, and it came, that mud came right through, blew out.
And that's what I'm asking for my information, because I'm not aware of anything.
And that, that was, that was where it came through.
Well, and.
Yeah, let's, let's keep it to the, but basically, you know, they had.
There had been a lot of construction during the home, was a lot of the silting problems leaving the site. That has been a very much an ongoing that our code enforcement has been trying to get handle on for a few years now.
And I, I will say, the one benefit of this is creating more level home pad construction sites. You, you will have less erosion than trying to build on a lot that slopes 10 feet from front to back. I mean.
Paul, anything else?
Oh, was he?
Commissioners?
Paul was going to say, say something, he was.
Well, is, is there any areas that you know, you know, in this development steeper or as steep as, as these slopes that you, I mean, obviously you highlighted them, and there's concern there.
Yeah. Well, and, and I think that's a, I'll be honest, what I was really thinking about was Old Battles Place. In between those buildings, you just got steep slopes going from one tiered house to another, and it's, you know, was kind of sold as green space and all that, and it's around the periphery. You know, I, I think there's, there's a better solution out there that if the grading happens, there could be plannings that support that.
And we're, like I say, I'm not, not opposed to planting with native trees, I mean, whatever it is, but, you know, and I mean, I've offered, I think, four times now.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But we certainly don't want to hold it up over, you know, discussion of plan.
I do, and, you know, I think there's a few questions, and then there was a lot of discussion, I think going back, because there was a lot of speculation on what the original plans were, you know, and, and this was not a single-family home development when it was originally approved. There was high-rises, there was mid-rises, there was revisions that came back and reduced that density. Those plans have been in place since 2010, and anybody could have seen those, those developments. Now, the 99 acres, there was, I, I mean, this was, Tim will tell you, when he first came in, what are you doing? He came and sold this and that, and, but it's not a requirement. The sing, as Mike told you, there was a definition of single-family within the TR district that is different from everything else. I do think it's important, there is absolutely a maintenance plan on the detention ponds within there. As each phase came along, each phase was added to that. As y'all know, those are O and M and stormwater management plans. They're recorded in probate, they're part of the covenants and restrictions of the neighborhood. Now, I can't tell you at, right now, from my understanding, is the RSA, the developer, is still in charge of the HOA. We do not get into HOA issues in the planning department or the planning commission. But it is the responsibility of the HOA, whoever is in charge, to get the silting and all that out of the pond, so they're operating at procedure. Well, I, I think that's, that's okay for us to check with our engineer and see how that's been going. Has that been done?
No.
That, that is.
Let's, let's, let's.
You'd, you'd mentioned that, that something about maybe us having an opportunity to get an outside tree survey, outside study, to maybe look at it that, that way.
Well, and, and if, for the trees, if you, if, if there's a question on did the developer's engineer or tree surveyor or landscape architect not surveyed the trees right, and then we got neighbors saying different, that's the only way I know to resolve it, is hiring our own folks to go out and check for, for the trees. For the drainage, as y'all know, those O and M plans, they put the liability on maintaining ponds on the property owner. We don't go out and check that. We'll, we'll remind people, I think, at the time of this, is every three years where we, we call and say, "Have you done your, your..." Yes. Where all of the maintenance plan that's drawn up, how often should you be checking that? So has that been done, to your knowledge, Tim?
It, it has not recently, to my knowledge, but I would like to point out that I have not been the engineer for this project prior to about six months ago, about a four or five-year period. No, no, I have been the engineer on, on all phases of this project other than Phase Eight, with a different company.
Sure.
And so, but I have not been involved.
What about implementing our tree ordinance into this phase?
I think that was an option when, when the 99 acres were added in and rezoned. If you wanted to amend the zoning agreement for this 99 acres, but it, it's in there, it was zoned low-rise residential. And I think you have that. If you want to get a valuation and then discuss with a certainty of what's there, but at the end of the day, there's a lot of, a lot of the developer's judgment on what they want to do. So do you have a black and white, I can sit here and tell you, no, stop this subdivision until they do what you want? I do think you can get a third-party review to confirm what is there, if you want to do that.
But at the same time, Hunter, even if we do the tree survey, and even if they find possibly some, some pine tree. on a residential lot, there's no protection. There's, it doesn't matter if you do that or not. When someone builds a house, they legally have a right to go in and strip that lot bare. And there's nothing the city can do to stop it. Because tree protection ordinance does not apply to residentially zoned lots.
What about common area?
Common area, yeah, that would, that would affect common area.
And that's...
That's what we're talking about.
But I will say, I don't think you, there is very clear guidance on if you found, if there was a 23-inch, their surveyor said that this is a 21-inch pine tree and there's a 23-inch.
Right.
You know, it's not very clear in this, that you can say you can't remove that tree. It leaves a lot of discretion for the developer and frankly, the developer's engineer to make good logical decisions.
We'd just be kicking the can down the road if we did that. But what, you know, and that's not what my thought is. I would like to, if possible, you know, I've got a lot of respect for, you know, Paul down here on our, on our board. He's done, you know, numerous landscape jobs in very difficult areas with all sorts of erosion areas. When he's got concerns, it gives me concerns. And, you know, I would like to see personally, a plan of how, if they're going to clear this, A, are there any other possible options that they could do within reason as far as, you know, not destroying that whole area? Or B, if it has to be done, what they're going to do to keep erosion from occurring? And how they're going to, you know, replant it? You know, just kind of see an actual plan with some native plants, kind of restoring what's there in the light of what the overall, you know, goal is. You know, it, it's kind of like, we gave a lot of leadway to this. Of course, a lot of this was because we were talking about, one time, we were staring down the barrel of 10, 10-story buildings out there. And we were staring down the barrels of that. And that was our position that we had to negotiate from. And with that said, we gave a lot of leadway, but we gave leadway within the reason that, you know, I mean, what Fontenot just read there for a minute of, of, you know, what the, the style is going to be, what the feeling's going to be of it. And, and a lot of it started that way. And then here, we've got single-family that's, how many units, you know, with everything clear-cut? And, and if this was an apartment project, you wouldn't be able to clear-cut it like that. You would have to build the roads first and then come back secondly. And, and so, it's kind of like, you know, you can choose the subdivision regs. You want the subdivision regs, you can choose the loosey-goosey. We don't want the loosey-goosey. But to me, if you're going to go in the document that Hunter has there, that I'm pretty familiar with, and you're going to take the loosey-goosey side on it, you need to kind of look at the part of, of, you know, we're trying to protect these owls and these yellow hammers and these fox squirrels and those areas and not just come in and clear-cut it from corner to corner. You know, that we, when we give that kind of carte blanche, you know, with the, the stipend, that it's going to be protecting the environment and, and building a once-in-a-lifetime beautiful, something that Fairhope hasn't had, that in the past y'all have done. I mean, all these people live here and love it and look, had all of them laughing together and enjoying their company, and y'all have built a great community there. And we're just kind of asking to, you know, not get to the point that you're wanting what you've got by, you know, just trying to get, get too much. And, and, and those, those are some real serious concerns with the erosion and what goes back in those plants in that area. And that, and that's, you know, it'll help y'all sell it, you know, if you do it right.
You know, respectfully, I, I don't think we are, you know, trying to take too much. Again, we're saving the, the nicest area of the property with the big oak trees. We're offering to replant native woodlands where we're cutting down pine trees. We're offering to replace with hardwoods. And the lots being clear-cut, I mean, they're going to be clear-cut when they build the houses anyways, if it's all pine trees, just like Phase Six was. So, so what's the point of, of leaving them now and making the construction more expensive when they're just going to cut them down when the houses are built? And there's, as Eric said, there's, there's no protection for them. I mean, so it seems like we're spending...
You're making the assumption that everybody's going to clear-cut their lot.
I'm not, I'm just saying it's going to look like Phase Six, which is...
But in the areas that are not lots, that are common areas, it's not just, native plants are good, and I love to see native plants, but it's the density of landscaping that makes it feel like the character of a tourist resort district. More than just the species. And sometimes it's, preserving something may be cheaper for you than planting something. So, you know, not everybody hates ponds. You can, you can incorporate them into a mix. But I think that the density feels lacking, to me, of landscaping.
Chris, I see here.
I'll, I'll address a couple of things that I heard. And I spoke to a couple of people, they called me. I found out about the, and I'm Eric with the Building Department, if you don't know me. But I got a call from the, the fire chief about the gate issue. And that day, I contacted, I contacted Stewart Contracting, which then put me in touch with the management or whomever the management company is. So, I want to let, and that's fine. But I want to let you know that I am addressing that issue because I contacted and let them know that we need to have that done. The other thing we did, yeah, the other thing we did was, one of the things that they had was installing what they call Yelp alarms on the gates, which are for police and, and first responders, so they can come up and, and hit their alarm and the gate open. So, that was two things, was to get it, get it operational and get the Yelps installed so that we can go and test them. So, I, I heard that comment come in and I just wanted to make sure you knew that we were addressing it. Okay? The other thing, and the other person, the person I spoke to, we talked about roads, paths, sidewalks, all of that. The only reason that subdivision has gates in the first place is because all of that is private. All of that belongs to you, 100%. It is all, that is, our subdivision regulations do not allow gated communities. The only way that you had that was because they agreed to take over ownership of all the roads, all the walkways. When that was originally came through in one of the phases, I brought up about handicapped accessible sidewalks. It is not a public right-of-way. They are not legally required on a, on a privately-owned right-of-way. So, just making sure that you understand those issues. Those are things that have come up. Those are things that were discussed. But, and I also hear a lot, because I talk to a whole lot of people that moved to this town, and I hear things all the time. HOA issues and things you're told by your HOA, it is absolutely unfortunate if you were told things that have not been true. Those are issues that we cannot address. That's a private contractual issue between you as a property owner and a homeowners association or restrictive covenants. I get calls all the time from HOAs saying, I have somebody that wants to build XYZ in my backyard, but it doesn't meet our restrictive covenants. I have told them, if it meets the zoning regulations and it meets the building code, I am issuing a permit. That is between y'all to fight over. We cannot get involved in that. Now, it is incredibly unfortunate and I hate that. I can tell you, I have had multiple folks come up to me and things they were told by real estate agents and things they weren't told by real estate agents, and they ended up buying properties. But that is something that is, that is between you guys and your HOA, unfortunately. And there's, there's nothing we can do to really address those kind of issues.
And Eric, just to pile on one, because we talked about something this afternoon that I think is, is, might, could be important. You know, and, and this is really for more Tim's sake, on the roads. I think most of the roads met the 20, 22 feet.
Right.
But if there is a height limit, there is a section of the building code that if fire access roads, I think need to be 26 if they're...
Yeah, let me, and I'll, I'll roll that, yeah. Fire access roads, which are roads or, or widths, they are required to be a minimum of 20 feet, okay? For fire access. If the buildings are over 30 feet tall, then you have to provide 26-foot wide for aerial fire access, which means a ladder truck, where they're going to be setting out outriggers to get to a taller structure. So, that's the one thing I know with some of them, we don't know the heights of some of these buildings. But that needs to be kind of kept in account. If things end up, if these end up going through, then that needs to be considered. Because that, if that's the case, then that may require having to redesign some of these roads.
Can we require that they come back with a plan that makes us feel comfortable with the clear-cutting of that area and the erosion control that they plan on using since that's such a steep area?
Because it's a sensitive area, if you want to table or request that they table to address the environmental concerns with the erosion and the landscaping, you have that ability. I'd agree with what has been said, though. They have a lot of discretion. The zoning ordinance gives them flexibility. The subdivision regulations give them flexibility. Eric was exactly right on describing the private roads that set forth in the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations. The tree ordinance doesn't apply in large part to this development. Certain aspects may apply, but for the most part, they, the developer has all of the discretion in terms of the buffers, the green area. If they're complying with the minimum green space requirements, they have a lot of the flexibility and discretion in terms of what is preserved, what is not preserved. So, to answer your question, that, that's up to Planning Commission's discretion, if you wanted to table it. If you have a specific direct, directive to the developer to meet with Mr. Fontenot and come back with a recommendation next month on certain aspects in looking at the erosion. Particularly, I think, the erosion concerns, less so the preserving the trees of the green space.
I would like the erosion and also to see if they have a, to see when the last time the lake was checked as far as to see if it's still doing what it's supposed to be doing. Since that's, you know, that's been 15 years since it was designed for all the different phases coming. And we've had a lot of changes come. I, I don't think personally, there are any issues with the lake because I've seen some pretty heavy rains and I haven't seen it overflow. But I, I think it's, with all the questions that we had asked by a number of engineers here, I think it's worth at least getting an answer for that question.
And I think the question was raised by one of the engineers about the, the details of when the drainage study occurred and the level of that. And those are all fair questions.
I have not had the opportunity to answer that question. I would be glad to answer the, the rest of the questions that we received tonight. We've been kind of, you know, going in circles on these slopes. But, so, the drainage study for, for the original lake was done sometime circa 2005, 2010. It was done, as was the, the lake out on the golf course. The, the actual wet pond volume, the, below the water surface, is not taken into any storage calculations. Basically, it's as if that pond were dirt up to the pond surface. So, any sedimentation in, in the pond, how it may affect water quality issues would not, certainly not affect water quantity issues, detention issues, flow rate issues. Given the size of Sweetwater Lake of 18 acres, it's pretty significant in size for this, this sized development to serve as a water quality pond. So, the, the drainage design for the pond within this phase was obviously done, you know, for this middle, last month. So, everything's fairly recent, other than the one for Sweetwater Lake. And on the slope, I do want to go back to the slopes for a minute. I just, I, I'm trying to get a little more clarification of why these are being considered highly erodible areas. I mean, we're at a maximum slope of four to one, which is less than what's required by the, by the subdivision regs for grading. You know, with, the intent was to sod them, solid sod them and stabilize them, just like you would any fill slope or pond slope that's had a four to one, you know. A three to one slope is actually allowed and we're, we're at a four to one. And that's only a very minor section in the middle where it pinches down. But the rest, they fan out to eight to one or 10 to ones on, on the edges. So, it's, it's just right there in the tightest spot in the middle where they get, approach four to one. So, I, I just, I guess I'm having a, a little bit of a hard time discerning why these are, you know, such erodible, or being deemed erodible areas when it's kind of common practice for site work to do fill slopes at a four to one slope and sod them. I mean, pretty much every job you do, you got a pond with, with a four to one slope on it. That's, that's sod it. Not that this is a pond, but you know, when I'm getting at it.
I get what you're getting at. Listeners? Anybody want to make a motion?
Tim, I don't know if you checked, the O and M plan for the original pond, Sweetwater, you know, there was added on, each phase was added on to, I believe, until we got to Phase Six, which has its own O and M? Phase Seven. They tied it in, but is there two entities responsible within the overall acreage for maintaining?
No, there shouldn't be. Probably the reason a new one started at Phase Seven was that was when the new pond was built on the golf course. And prior to Phase Seven, everything drained to Sweetwater Lake. So, that was probably the, you know, and, and I, I can't remember back that far, but I would, I would make it a pretty good assumption that would be the reason why. Are there any other questions the commission would like answered? I mean, I know we've been here for a long time.
No, I agree. I mean, I, we're getting down to the time and I totally agree with you, Tim. Chris, do we have the ability to table it or does he have to request the tabling himself? If we wanted to say, we wanted to look at the, see what the lake's last inspection was and have him meet with our Tree Committee Chairman and discuss the trees and the erosion in that, those sensitive areas?
Is the developer willing to, to do that and table it until the next meeting? If the developer's willing to do that, I would suggest you set a specific time to table it until the next meeting.
To me, I just want to make sure that this is such a big thing and there's so much interest here. I mean, I, I think that you're right, that you've, you know, got us. But on the other hand, if we can look and see what we can do to minimize those impacts in 30 days, I think it'll be worth it and make me feel a lot more nice.
I completely understand and I, I'm not, not trying to, you know, I, I'm trying to meet in the middle as much as I can.
I totally get it.
I mean, it's, it's a tough spot being up here sometimes.
Yeah, I, I get it.
It's tough for us, too.
I understand, I understand.
We've got a phenomenal, you know, our Tree Committee Chairman's phenomenal and, and he can come up with some ideas that I, I think might give a lot of people a little bit more peace. And if not...
And I'm assuming that's Mr. Fontenot.
Yes.
Well, we do have a new landscape architect join the city also. And I don't know if he's had a...
We could bring him in, too.
If he's had a chance to review this plan.
We can bring him, just if we just had a meeting, we can't hit a corn. But if we just had a meeting with me, Fontenot, you, the city landscape architect, and, and just went over just to make sure that, you know, y'all have done within reason everything that you can do.
Okay. I mean, that, that's agreeable on our end. And, and again, you know, we're certainly willing to, to work with you and, and consider, you know, some options.
Yeah.
Could we include the landscape architect to address the committee? The gentleman from the, from the property owners?
If he, if, yeah, if he, I think that would be fine, if you want to make that in form of motion. Okay.
I would suggest against it.
Oh, never mind, Chris.
I mean, he certainly, they can certainly communicate, if they're willing to communicate. I mean, I guess, I guess there's no, there's no prohibition on it. So, I guess that's, that's your discretion.
Okay.
I probably would, would like to have our, our landscape project architect for the project present in those conversations, obviously, because I, I don't claim to be an expert, an expert in, in landscape architecture.
That'll be fine. All right, thank you, Tim.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. That will come back up on the next...
Now, y'all need to, y'all need to make that motion.
We're going to make a motion to...
With, with the agreement of the developer, table it to the next Planning Commission meeting.
Do you want to do that, Holly, please?
Oh, what, what number is this one?
What time does it go? 2504.
I make a motion to, item number 2504, that we table... What is it, SP? I don't have it for me.
SD.
SD2.
SD2504.
Oh, oh, right. I make a motion that we table SD2504 with the recommendation of the city's arborist landscape...
Landscape.
Landscape professional and...
Get to me prior to the next meeting.
What was the other one that we, oh, and a outside tree survey specialist. Didn't we say that?
It's your, your motion.
For the next meeting, 30 days.
March 6, yes. Do, do we have a second?
We have the March, we moved it from March 3 to March 6. That's mine.
What's that?
You have a second?
It's not a good month.
What, the lake?
I, I think, I think we should, I think we should say city landscaper and arborist. I went landscape and...
I think he's the horticult, he's the horticulture director.
I think we should say city horticulturist.
And he's the new guy, right?
Chairman and chairman of the Tree Committee.
Okay, city horticulturist and landscape.
And the chairman of the Tree Committee.
Yeah, and I think I leave it at that, that way we can control if that happens.
Okay, we're going to do a redo. I table item S D twenty-five oh four with the recommendation of the city horticulturist and the arborist.
Tree committee.
Tree committee, tree commissioner for the city.
Yeah.
For the next meeting.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further?
If I may, you were also, had discussed previously the, uh, checking of the.
The maintenance of the, of the ponds. It's the checking of, what do.
The three-year maintenance check.
The O and M plan.
Three-year maintenance check.
Status of the O and M plan.
Oh, well, okay.
All right.
Status of the O and M plans for the development.
Okay.
Cover all the bases for that.
Got that. Do I have a second?
I will second again.
Okay, any further?
Can, can, and I'm sorry, let's, yeah.
Okay, we have. We have a motion to approve subject to.
To table.
To table. We have a, a motion to table, subject to, it's getting late, a motion to table, subject to the developer before the next meeting, uh, meeting with the city, um, horticulturist and the city, uh, Tree Committee Chairman, as well as, uh, review of the.
Pond.
Uh, O and M agreement with the ponds. That's correct, on the motion and the second. Any further discussion?
And the developer is, okay, we're.
Agreeable, agreeable.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed unanimously. Oh, we've got a zoning memo first.
We got one more. We got two more.
No, we're not gonna do it next week, I promise you. I promise you. We, we won't even open the public hearing. We've had it. Oh, but we have some stuff before, don't we? Hey, Hunter?
Well, I haven't been released for six months.
Hey, Hunter? Go ahead and let her rip, baby.
Okay. So. All right, we still have a meeting. So this one's pretty easy. This is a, uh, amendment to the. The zoning ordinance. And just for reference, this is a recommendation to the city council, so the Planning Commission can review what we're proposing, recommend approval, recommend denial, recommend approval with conditions, or continue this for future discussion. Essentially, we are proposing to remove boarding house and dormitory, the uses from the use table. We looked at just taking the language all the way out of the ordinance, but there may be some dormitory items, things that kind of fall under that, that we're not aware of. No harm by leaving the definition, the parking requirements in there, in case it, it, there is something, um, tied to the campus, coastal campus. We've got some churches that have some dorm- dormitories outside the city. If something like that came up, we don't want to, uh, make those illegal, so we left that in. And that's the gist of the, to, to show that, we're basically removing the circles from boarding use or dormitory from Table Three-One, the use table out of the zoning ordinance. So this would go to the city council if you recommend approval. To, to. We have, um, not, to my knowledge, uh, the records from ninety-nine back were a little less clear, not, not searchable by digital. I can't type in a keyword, so, uh, haven't looked at every minute going back to eighteen ninety-five, but, um, I don't know, we, we did have a business license for a single house that was, had a business license at one time for a boarding house, um, in our digital records, but it's, hasn't been active for a few years. So right now, we don't have any active business license. You probably wouldn't have a business license for a dormitory if there was one. That's a kind of unique, Lightning, or, or Beckwith, Camp Beckwith would be a, you know, for example. And, or the church down outside of the city limits that, um, oh, they just added some boys and girls kind of camps, that, that might fall under dormitory.
Down on scenic ninety-eight.
Yeah.
A tree.
You know.
Potentially.
Just out of cur, I'm just curious why. Is, I, I, and I'm just, I, it's fine. I mean, it.
Well, I will note there, um, this would not, this change would not apply to any discussions that may have been had with staff or the city about proposed boarding houses, if there are any that have formally met with the city and/or the utility department or submitted an application. I don't know that there has been any that submitted an application. I think, to answer your question, it was a legal recommendation to clean up the zoning ordinance, based on some overlap and some gray ambiguities of the difference between an, a boarding house and/or some other uses that are included in the zoning ordinance table that could lead to, uh, some unintended consequences.
So just cleaning it up.
Cleaning it up.
Got it.
A children's shelter? Is that the question? I, I imagine there's a couple other uses, but, uh, candidly, I have not analyzed that. Um, we would have to look at that.
There will be, you know, some follow-up. This was kind of on our, our shortlist even as our updates, because as y'all know, with the comp plan, there's, um, some clarity needed on maybe some short-term rentals that are allowed in just zoning districts, as opposed to what, what shape do they take form physically? You know, you've got, we talked about some zoning, or the other cities have, where they might have a, you know, tourist home district, that's for the smaller, or the hybrids now with Airbnb, you know, one house that has eight rooms, it's just a house. But it can be rented to individual people. So, some of that will be follow-up on this, and we, we can probably handle some of those other uses under different categories.
All right. Do I have a motion to recommend? Wait, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. And, and security just showed up now that everybody left, but don't worry, I have my hammer up here.
He's been out there. He's been out there.
Okay, good. Thanks. Oh, thank you for your service. Oh, no, uh, I would like to open the public hearing at this point, and since there's nobody from the public to hear from, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to? Do I have a second? Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed unanimously. Do we need to go in the other room for this meeting, or can we turn the mics off?
No, we, we need to go in the other room.
All right. Do I have a motion? If you'll read the.
And, and I've given a, a statement to the city clerk to include with the minutes, but I just recommend that the Planning Commission go into executive session to discuss pending or potential litigation. It'll be very brief, five to ten minutes, and I also do not expect any action for the Planning Commission to have to be taken after our discussion.
Does Fontenot need to go to this? Is this before him or after him?
Yes, he, yes. He's a planning commissioner, yes.
Got it.
Y'all need to move and vote on it, though.
Oh, do I have a motion to? Do I have a second? Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye, let's go.